This is the State Board of Education Monthly Meeting. It is Wednesday, May 15th, and we are at North Country High School. So let's start with a call to order. Suzanne, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Mohammed Jo.
Yeah.
Gray Farren. Kim Gleason.
Here.
Tammy Colby.
Good afternoon.
Lyle Jefferson.
Here.
Tom Lovett.
Here.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Jennifer Samuelson.
Here.
Rich Warner. Aleah Wilburn.
Here.
Secretary Saunders.
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started, are there any amendments to the agenda? I have a couple of notes. So two things that I'd like to amend to the agenda. One is as soon as we kind of get through this piece, we have Principal Chris Young with us here from the high school, and I'd love to have him come and just make a few welcoming comments. The other thing is, I spoke with Aleah, and the student report, which is noted as Item D, we're going to shift to later in the agenda because Gray is not here today, but Aleah and Addie Luntner, who you may remember from VSAR, will be doing a presentation. Addie cannot be with us at the scheduled time, so we are going to have them come, I think, after Item K and before Item L. With that, any other amendments to the agenda? All right. Principal Young, I will turn it over to you. Do you want to come up here?
Whatever. Thank you, board members, for making the trek to the Northeast Kingdom. It's a beautiful area. I hope that you were able to get a sense of the vibe that we have in our school. And luckily, the kids, I think, run their best behavior. You even made it through a lunch period with no alarms that I had to respond to, which is great. I appreciate you being here. I know it's not an easy place to get to. I also, since I have the mic on the floor, just point out that I think North Country is pretty typical of a lot of schools in our state in that we're an aging building, and we have a ton of community support that supports our programs. And we really need the help of the State Board and the Legislature to support the work that's happening in our schools. So I appreciate the work that you do. I hope that we're able to work together on further developing equitable ways to provide education for particularly students in North Country, but also across the state. And just thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much for having us. We had a tour of the school, you know, led by Aleah, as well as Principal Young and Gwen from the CTE Center, which this has just been a really nice time to be able to get up here and see what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Also, say that coffee, once they clear the lunch, we'll have coffee and tea. The water will stay out, the cookies will stay out. If you need the restrooms, if you haven't already found them out there, this way, ladies room on the left, men's room on the right, gender-neutral bathrooms, one story down or one hallway down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard? Either from the audience or if you're online, you can press star five to unmute if you're calling in or raise your hand icon. Not seeing anybody, we will keep this item open for a little bit and move on and circle back. So at this point, why don't we move on to the next item? I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our April 17th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Kim.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tammy. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from April 17th, 2024, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions?
I sustain. I wasn't here.
Okay.
Oh, I wouldn't agree with that.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you.
I sustain also.
All right.
And also just a quick recognition of Suzanne and Maureen once again for all their extra work in organizing meetings, but also in doing such a great job at the minutes. We don't make your life easy, we know that, but we are very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we now have Aleah. This is your moment.
You're on the agenda, didn't you know? You have to sit right there.
It is common board practice where when we have our senior student member graduating off the board, we take a moment to honor the student, and we have prepared a resolution for you, and we have a little something for you to wish you well. But we really wanted to do it today at your school and just really express our appreciation for you serving on the board. It's been really nice having you here.
Thank you.
So Kim.
I have the privilege of being able to redo your resolution. So Vermont State Board of Ed, resolution of appreciation for Aleah Wilburn. Whereas Aleah Wilburn has served with distinction on the State Board of Ed from July 2023 through June 2024, and whereas Aleah earned the deep respect of her State Board colleagues by sharing her perspective as a student, athlete, and advocate in a manner that was respectful and caring for the needs of all. And whereas Aleah has been deeply committed to courageously sharing her unfailing honesty, thoughtfulness, and maturity. And whereas Aleah performed her duties with integrity and helped the State Board understand and appreciate the challenges and successes of high school students throughout the state. And whereas Aleah has committed to being the change that she wishes to see in her community and her state through her leadership with the Vermont Student Anti-Racism Network and the Let Me Be Great Campaign, and through her social justice work in her school and community. And whereas Aleah has raised student voices, especially those that have been historically underrepresented in meetings and throughout the state with her impactful writing and presentation skills. And whereas Aleah was a vital member of the State Board of Ed and provided not just a student voice, but a voice for all Vermont students. While Aleah had only one year on the State Board of Ed, her impact will be felt in the continued work of the State Board of Ed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the State Board of Ed bestows its gratitude and commendations to Aleah. We thank her for her service and commitment to improving Vermont education for all students, and we hope that she'll remain connected with our work as she pursues her passions. We all wish her a wonderful journey as she embarks on this next chapter of her life, dated this 15th day of May, 2024. Signed by Jennifer. And we have our token of appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do hope that you can talk.
Yes. And I think it would be great, if you don't mind sharing, Aleah has a slightly different plan than the last time we talked about her plan for what she's doing next year. It's super exciting, and if you're comfortable sharing, we'd love to hear about it.
So I was supposed to be going to Wells College in Aurora, New York, but we found out like two weeks ago that the college is closing. So while this last two weeks have been like crazy, I ended up committing to Leslie University last Thursday, and I will be playing basketball and volleyball there. Only downfall is that Leslie dropped my major, which was going to be political science, but I'll be majoring in social work in hopes to become an immigration lawyer or a diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator within schools.
So we might have to do a PS on resilience. And just recognize.
I'm sorry.
That's how excited for you.
Want a picture?
Is they'll give you a picture?
Yes. Oh, I see you want a picture. Such a bad. Oh, I'm happy. It's like a real picture.
Go for your meeting.
He's like a proud.
He's the proud guy. Yes, with your resignation.
So Kim, you're on that side.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, that lesson worked out.
I'm glad to get to.
Saving. I didn't realize that you were so resilient.
Can I skip over? Oh, other board announcements. Are there other board announcements? I just wanted to point out, Rich, I believe, yes, Rich is here virtually with us today. Gray could not be here at all. He's got some AP exams that are coming up that he's studying for, as well as marching band and end of school, so he sends his regrets. And Lyle, I know that you need to leave early today for a prior commitment. And Lyle. School concert. I think Lyle also has a couple of updates to provide, maybe about the robotics competition and then the DKC Vermont Spring Leadership, perhaps? No, DKC? Weren't you like a?
Remind me where it was. So the robotics team did very well. So we have Rutland Area Robotics, and it's the iBots. And there are 4,000 teams around the United States. And the Rutland team came in 16th of about 640 competing teams in Houston, Texas. They surprised even themselves. They did extraordinarily well, had a great time, real good learning experience, 50,000 people watching. It's kind of the Super Bowl of robotics. And even when they enter, the fog streams up and the crowd goes wild, and they have the big screen TVs. It's just nuts. And they had a great time. So it's nice to know that Vermont has world-class students that can compete in a world-class way. And it's schools and teachers that are doing that, so thank you all very much. They really helped the kids get where they were going. And then we have parents that are mentors and all that kind of stuff that basically my role is driving. And it's about all I can do. Then there was the Retired Teachers Association. They don't want to be called a sorority, but it's a women's retired teacher organization. The iBots went and talked to them and talked to them about education and how important education is to them. And I talked a little bit about trends in education from my, from kind of our standpoint, and none of which would surprise you, so I won't go into any of the details on that, because that was the boring part. The students talking about the robotics piece was the excitement for the day. And the teachers, the retired teachers, really enjoyed that. So that's it.
Weren't you a keynote speaker or you were somehow?
I shuffled that off to the robots. I started, they ended, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other announcements? I will circle back again. Any members of the public who wish to be heard? I'm not seeing anyone. Still, we've got a little bit of time on that. Okay, so I think I'm going to maybe hold off on any more public comment. And if anyone does wish to be heard, we will have an opportunity again at the end of our meeting. Because at this point, I think I'd like to turn it over to the presentation on community schools, if you guys are ready to go. So just to kind of set the table on this, Act 67 of 2021 established funding for five recipients to develop and plot a pilot community schools models. These schools serve as resource hubs that provide a broad range of easily accessed, well-coordinated supports and services that help students and their families with increasingly complex needs. Together with their community partners, grant recipients develop, expand, and sustain a community school model that demonstrates five pillars as outlined in legislation, which I'm assuming you guys will get into. And as one of the grant recipients, North Country Supervisory Union has used grant funds to deliver a comprehensive educational program across the 12 schools within its multi-district union. So we were joined this afternoon by Elaine Collins, the superintendent of North Country Supervisory Union, and Samantha Stevens, the community schools coordinator. So welcome to you both. It's great to have you here.
So I'll start us off by providing some context. Samantha Stevens is really our, she is the coordinator of our community schools programming, so is the real expert in the room on this. So I'll acquiesce to her expertise after I set the context. So I'm in my second, finishing my second year as the superintendent of North Country Supervisory Union. Prior to that, I was an elementary school principal for 11 years. Prior to that, I was a middle school teacher. Prior to that, a parent educator, a school secretary, a library aide. I started out 34 years ago as a support staff person, never envisioning that 34 years later I'd be sitting here before you in this current role. So and not ever actually wanting to do that either. I'll mention. So as Jennifer mentioned, we have 12 districts in our multi-district supervisory union. We did not unify during Act 46 and remained a supervisory union. And I'll read to you the list, because even after two years, I will forget one if I don't read the list. So we have Brighton Elementary, Charleston Elementary, Coventry Village School, Derby Elementary, J. Westfield Elementary, Lowell Grade Ed School, Newport City Elementary, Newport Town School, North Country Career Center, North Country Union Junior High School, North Country Union High School, and Troy School. We have about 2,750 students. Our poverty index is about 50, between 50 and 60%. Some schools have about 80%, and some schools have much less. But overall, about 50 to 55. We have about 520 square miles in our supervisory union, 65 miles from one end to another. And so, and 17 board meetings a month because we are not unified, and each of those boards have individual governance structures. So one of the downfalls of not being unified is that it's a lot of separate meetings and a lot of separate budgets. We for sure see our work as a supervisory union as being a force multiplier. So the work that we're able to do as a supervisory union and specifically in community schools supports the work, particularly in small schools that don't have the capacity or the resources to be able to provide for the comprehensive needs that our kids have. So, or supports that they require. So for example, we employ a sort of a fleet of behavior specialists and behavior team assistants that are assigned to schools. And then they're SU employees, but they support the direct work with students in the schools. The same with our neurodevelopmental team that helps to support students who are neurodevelopmentally atypical. We have, you know, Sam's team with her. She'll talk about her unique supports for schools, our early childhood programming that we have that we support all of preschools that are embedded within each of our elementary schools. And we have a really robust encore program. So Beth Chambers, who was once one of my students, believe it or not, is now our encore coordinator and has done so for a number of years with great distinction, not only in our state but nationally, as one of our ambassadors for after-school programming in Washington, DC this past summer. So I would say that many of you already know that education has changed significantly in the last 34 years, certainly, but definitely even in the last 10 years or so. The needs of our students and the needs of our community have increased, and that has direct impacts on our schools. It's great that our schools have become sort of social servants agencies because we don't have the external capacity with many of our community partners to provide for students. But it is outside of the role of education to be mental health providers and behavior providers and homeschool coordination and lots of other things that we do currently in our schools. If we don't do it, no one else will. So it is our mission and our dedication to lean into that work rather than to rage against it. But it is an additional burden and adds to the financial impact on our taxpayers when we have to provide for those things. So COVID, you know, many of these, many of these problems existed prior to COVID, but COVID became an amplifier and created a greater gap for many of our students and families who struggle to provide for basic necessities. So although we had many families who fit that same category prior to COVID, we have many more families who fit that distinction now. And so our community schools work becomes even more important than it was prior to COVID. And I'll say the two most important features that I see community schools contributing to our network is in the areas of chronic absenteeism and disengagement from school. And those, as I said before, were problems before. Now are just on a much grander scale. It's not atypical for us to have kids with 50, 60, 70 absences from school in a school year. And that was, although we saw it occasionally, wasn't as prevalent as it currently is. So Samantha can talk about her work, but I'll just mention that the work of schools is really, has really become more integral than it used to be. We used to be educators, right? We used to be folks that would have kids for the set amount of time in the day, and they'd go home to structured and supportive environments at home. And now we are doing much more than just education. And because of that, it makes the work more complex, but even more important. So.
Thank you, Elaine.
Sure.
Thank you so much for having me here today. I really love my job, and I really love the supervisory union because of its commitment to providing for all of the needs that are really essential in order for us to ask children to come into classrooms to learn. So when I started the supervisory union about six years ago, a little less, I was in a 12-hour-a-week position supporting students experiencing homelessness. We had not had anyone serving exclusively in that role in a dedicated position. So by the end of six months, I was in a full-time role and had identified more than 63 students in that time. The role of the homeschool coordinator, the McKinney-Vento coordinator are all very similar positions, and my background lends itself very well to doing that work. I come from a mother who was in the Head Start world for most of my early childhood experience and then transitioned to being a junior high school teacher for 20 years when I was in my teens. And I think about how she said I should become a teacher, and I said, absolutely not, I'm never going to do that. But somehow, I found my way back into education because there is this place for somebody whose focus has been really in the social services and human services realm to serve the needs of students who want to learn, can learn, just need social supports in order to do so. And so I think of my job in the supervisory union really as someone who reduces social barriers to learning. We have special ed teams that we work with when those needs are in the special education department, but this is a different kind of work because these needs may integrate or intersect with a special education need, but they are unique in the ways that they affect children. So very excited that our supervisory union had already invested in that work prior to COVID and prior to the implementation of the community schools grant in Vermont. And when the opportunity to apply came up, we were really well-positioned to start to pivot in that direction and grow our team and grow our work. So I did prepare a presentation. I am so, again, really grateful to be with you because this opportunity gives you the chance to slow down and see what you've been up to. And most of my job is running all day, all week long. So being able to just create a slide like this and remind myself of all of the smiles that we have shared across the months of this program really balances some of the harder days when it's frustration and tears that we're working through with families and children. So to be able to come back and remember all of the ways that we have impacted the school community has been really wonderful for me this week. So I'll just ground us in the five pillars of Vermont Community Schools. That's on the front page of the handout I provided. As we said, our schools were really already community schools before the model was created. But having the model has been an awesome foundation for us to think about ways that we can grow our schoolwork. So right now, I'm working with the Newport Town School in their, it's a pre-K to sixth grade setup. And they're looking at how is our population going to change over the next 15 years? And how are we going to grow to support the needs of that population? The five pillars of community schools are a really amazing way to start to look at that with their board and their school community to say, what are we already doing really well? Where are the gaps? And how could we grow through partnership and through finding additional resources? So I think of this as something that helps us orient our work and be self-critical in ways that help us grow and take advantage of opportunities. Much of our work is also supported by a Bernie Sanders earmark that we received three years ago. That allowed us to build out what is called the Family Resource Center over at the supervisory union. We have a kitchen that is completely accessorized with laundry, refrigerator, freezer, stoves, microwaves, everything that a family would need to be able to come in and get comfortable and make a meal, make a meal with us, be involved, build community in that moment. We also have a food pantry that's available for families needing food support, specifically McKinney-Vento, but now because of community schools expanded to the general population. We also have a classroom, which right now is being used for tutoring, and I'll talk more about that towards the end of my presentation. That space has been used for families who need a space to charge phones or warm up while their laundry is being done, families who are coming in from perhaps tenting. You know, we're entering that season where more families are moving into tents again. And so we'll have families come in and kind of have a warm space to be and eat and take space while they're meeting other needs. We also are able to use that space for virtual meetings with partners like DCF, Economic Services, NECA. All of those things, having a safe space where families feel like they can come without judgment and be comfortable with us and have their needs met in community is really, has been really supportive of our program. We also have three vans. Transportation in the Northeast Kingdom is not easier than other places where it is already hard. And having the ability to drive our programming or drive a community member, a family member to a medical appointment or a community resource has been a really essential addition. So we're grateful to have those resources from Bernie. It's an example of how we're blending funding sources to help grow our program. Community schools has also helped us think about the ways that central office was already meeting a lot of the foundational pillars of community schools. Elaine mentioned Beth Chambers, our encore after-school and summer program coordinator. She had after-school program and summer program on lockdown. Like, it's a beautiful program. We didn't need to create that with our funding. Other schools have chosen to build out those programs with their community schools funds. We decided to take the learning from some of her models and develop them for middle school cohorts. For example, our middle school leadership team and our middle school GSA, which Beth and I partner on to provide weekend programming for kids for Saturdays a year throughout the year. We also have expanded that to include a service learning component, one Saturday per year, Greenup Day. And we are also working together on a middle school cabaret kind of coffee house, because so many of these kids come in and want to entertain. And so the next level, and we're trying to work it out for this school year, is to create that space where our middle schoolers can come together from all of our tiny, small rural schools and get to know each other in one space before they come to this building, build relationships, you know, gain some face recognition before they come here, build some relationship. And so that has been a really wonderful way to also use our community schools pillars. Elaine mentioned active family and community engagement and also our work around safe, inclusive, and equitable learning environments. That's where I settle the work of chronic absenteeism because so often it's connected to those things. So that will be a big part of my conversation today. And finally, collaborative leadership and practices. That's something we've been continuing to build out through our work with PTOs and PTAs in the supervisory union, also training cohorts of our administrative staff members so that they feel prepared and have more tools for integrating community into their leadership structures. And that could be through parent groups. That could be by sharing projects with the local select board or a municipality, those kinds of projects. So I'm going to kind of move through these two slides because I've already mentioned many of the things we've accomplished. And I'd like to focus on how we do what we do and the essential pillars of active family and community engagement and safe, inclusive, and equitable school. So these are some images of our Family Resource Center, of our preparation for programming. The whole idea behind what we do is really around connection, support, relationship, and belonging. If you don't have those things, then you cannot build the kind of trusting relationships that students and families need to come in and feel like their school is really there to support them and their learning goals, whatever they might be. So this is part of appreciating the differences between families and their experiences with school and recognizing that we need to do a better job as a school system to create pathways for families into schools and to being comfortable in schools. I included the picture of the freezer full of pork because that is another example of how our community becomes involved in our work. We had the freezer, they had the two pigs left over at the end of the season that had not been purchased. So they called out of the blue to say, we read about your program in the newspaper. We wondered if you'd be interested in taking some of these pork products. I had never been asked to put together an order for a butcher before. It was a first, but we were so grateful, and I can say that that freezer is now like maybe half-full at this point, and that was just two months ago. So having community know about what we do and want to be involved, there's an egg delivery coming tomorrow at noon. It's all a part of helping to build connection with folks who want to make change, improve our community connections, and be involved in supporting learners and families. So this is going to start by itself, I think. I don't think there is a better way to show what Community Steam Night is about than that video. That is the first evening of what has been a five-week series that we move from one community school to another. We came up with this idea last year really based on community surveys and the input of our administrators who were saying, we need more ways to welcome families back into our schools post-COVID. How can we do that in a way that is fun and inviting, really easy, and provides an educational element? So we created the Van Gogh Mobile Arts Program last year with a high school art teacher who created a menu of five activities, and we brought that workshop series to two schools, Troy School and Coventry School, last year. We show up with dinner, with the art activities. Families just have to register, or maybe not, and come in for the evening and enjoy the activity with us. And then we all clean up together, and we go home, and families have already fed their children. Everybody's tired and happy and ready to go to bed. So we launched that last year. It was extremely successful in those two small communities, and we thought, well, what else can we do? Because the arts aren't for everyone, we were being asked to provide more STEM/steam activities for students, and we happened to have an amazing STEAM coach who came on board at the NCSU Central Office, Erin Miller, who was able to sit down and help me think through, well, how do we create this same program and take it on the road for other community schools? So this year, we brought it to Charleston and to Newport Town. It was incredibly successful, even more, 185 visitors to 10 total events, so five in each school, meeting once a week. And then our Art Van Gogh, again, was in Newport City and North Troy because they wanted us back, and we were happy to come. And so we had 220 attendees over 10 events, 102 unique participants. And I think that creating that space is allowing people to just be parents or caregivers with us, for kids to come across age groups and really be in those multi-age groupings, either helping each other solve problems or entertaining new ideas together for the first time. And the overall feedback has been that they want us back, they want more. It absolutely 100% met their hopes for active, for community engagement opportunities for their students. Their students learned, and they would love it if we would come back again. So we're looking at next year, how can we help schools think about ways that they want to do community engagement? Because always, my goal is for the family to have a connection with their individual school, not necessarily with or through my office, but directly with their school community. So we have worked harder in this year to include at least one key staff member from that building so that that is the person that somebody is getting to know more closely and in a different place, not an IEP meeting, not an opening welcome night at their school, but in a like really authentic learning opportunity. And they don't have to come every night. They can come when they're available. We like them to sign up mostly because we had an evening at Newport City where 55 individuals came in one night, and we had to go back out to the pizza place again because we just couldn't serve them all. But that is a great problem to have. When they're there, we get to know them in a different kind of way. Sometimes we find out that a family is about to move or is in a housing challenge, and they can say, oh, well, I've got a colleague that you should meet, Samantha Stevens. I'm sure she'd love to get to know you and see what she can do to help. Sometimes it's about families helping each other, realizing, oh, we both have this shared childcare need for such-and-such day because basketball season is coming and both of our kids are enrolled. How can we work through that problem in a way that meets both of our needs? So I love our expanded truancy program. Oh, that's not supposed to be the next slide. You're getting the preview. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our Restorative Truancy Project. This project is about building out that relationship and belonging piece with families, recognizing that there are a lot of reasons, different reasons for every family and student about why a student is not coming to school consistently, seeing that everyone's numbers in the truancy rates have risen since COVID, and really feeling like we had a responsibility to figure that out together in a way that was not going to penalize families. So, you know, our existing system was really based around notices that threatened the court system. That doesn't work. It is also not a helpful thing to do to a family who is already experiencing challenges getting to work or might be really adversely affected by having their reach-up held back or being fined. So we engaged in this rethink about what truancy should look like at North Country Supervise Reunion starting in 2020, and the entrance of the Community Schools grant brought us resources and a new way of thinking about how we wanted to continue to develop and change the pathways for addressing truancy in our school system. So this picture, I just want to note, is a student that we've been serving in the Restorative Truancy Program since 2021, along with his two siblings. The two additional people in the picture are my staff, Rocky Stacy and Lisa DeGelfarni, and this, the student said, is his image of the perfect family. And this is after two years of working with them in their school and then in their home through home visits, but now also adding mentoring. So Rocky and Lisa spend Wednesday afternoons with these children, helping to just build skills outside of school and help build their confidence. Because some of the feedback that they're getting in other places is not so positive, and we felt like we need to find a way to help provide mentorship and support so that they have a safe space where they can continue to build their sense of self in a positive way. So I love this picture. It's framed in our office. It's busy. This is a busy slide because we have been busy revising restorative truancy in our school system. So as I said, we started thinking about it in 2020. I did not volunteer to be the truancy person for North Country Supervise Reunion, but I can tell you, as of this month, I am smiling about it, like, which is not because every single day there's success, but because we have some promising things on the horizon that I'm really excited about for this year and next year. And that can really change your perspective on what is a very tricky problem in most places. So I just want to draw your attention to some specific points on the map. We started by collaborating with the Community Restorative Justice Center because we were not the experts in restorative work. The SU had invested in a few years of training cohorts within schools to improve restorative approaches and responses to student justice issues in schools, but I was not around for that. My staff were not around for that. And we really felt like because the current truancy system involved the court system, and we wanted to revise it based on the court system, having a community partner who was focused in that world would be really helpful. So we started to think about how we could do this in a smaller way, and we came up with a pilot program that we launched at Troy School. Troy School, the staff member Lisa DeGelfarni, who's now out of our office at Central Office, was working at Troy as a paraprofessional in her retirement because she loves kids. And she was also a COSA volunteer for Circles of Support and Accountability through the Restorative Justice Center, so she was perfectly positioned to take on this launch in Troy. That first group that we worked with was a combination of Troy students who were referred and also McKinney-Vento-eligible students, who I was already working with. So it was a cohort of 12, and you'll see a little bit of their data in a minute. Things got rolling at Troy, and we realized that there was an opportunity to bring Lisa to Central Office and expand the outreach of the restorative truancy model. Along the way, we looked at the Truancy Task Force. A task force is not a great name for a group of community members who are there to help. And so one of the first things we did was look at rebranding, and it went beyond changing the name of the task force to the Student Engagement Team, to really looking at our MOU and how are the partners at that table like supposed to respond according to our MOU to this issue? And if it involved a punitive measure, then we really needed to look at that again and think about whether that was going to be the best approach for bringing kids back. So we made major revisions to our MOU with each partner committing to a restorative relational approach to serving families and got rid of moving to the court system whenever possible. We had to exhaust all other measures before an affidavit could even be filed, and luckily, that aligned perfectly with the desire of the state's attorney's office, which frankly didn't want to get those affidavits unless they could prove that we hadn't exhausted every measure. We moved from the revised MOU and practices into the restorative pilot launch at the SU level. We have expanded over the course of three years to serving more than 60 students, although the data sets that I used for this presentation are based on 56 students because I pulled out the folks who moved frequently in and out of the district or have since completely left the district because it just got too complicated. But we have served more than 60 students through this model in our office. We do that as a team because we can't always all be there when a need arises for a student. So it works really well, even though it can be very loud, that we all sit in the same room, and we hear the same stories, and we can problem-solve, and we can say, you've got to take the kids in Troy to the Orleans Dental Clinic on this day, but this family needs to go in for a hearing, or they need to go in to talk to Barge about their student's process, and we need to be there with them. So who's going to cover that with the kids? So teaming helps a lot when serving this number of students, and we'll get further on into the total number of SU students who are experiencing chronic absenteeism in the SU later. And then finally, the updated letter. We got rid of the letter that says, we're going to send you to court, because that does not make anybody feel like they want to be your partner in getting a kid back to school. So I'm only going to share data from that first cohort, and this is, again, a very busy graph. But what I want to just point out is that we're really following the numbers. One of the points on the timeline was the investment in the MBA Truancy Alert System for our student information system. So that allows us to pull data for specific groups of students. It could be all students who have experienced seven or more absences or 20 or more absences, depending on what we're wanting to measure. It can also be at the cohort level, so I'm able to pull our 12 students over the course of the last three years, every year's attendance, to measure where they are. The reason that this is valuable is that you can see across the bottom some of the factors that are impacting those specific students' attendance. And the ways that we intervene are different for every kid because for each student, it may be that the student is involved with a mental health concern or a parent. It may be that a student is experiencing substance use disorder or a parent. So a lot of different pathways and needs that each of these kids have, even within the same household, two different students can respond very differently to interventions and have very different needs depending on the factors impacting them. And I'm seeing that especially in a family where we're serving a fourth grader and a seventh grader, and as that seventh grader gets closer to transition to high school, it's becoming harder to engage them. And, you know, I think the value in this data is really in the next slide. Oops. Where I can drill down into specific students. So this is what those bar graphs are based on, and what I'm specifically looking at is I'm looking for each column of the next year to be green, right? Like, each, so column F, if it is highlighted in green, it's because the number is higher than the year before. And so I'm trying to track growth, but I don't just want it to be better than it was at the point of referral because often it's very, very low. My goal is to get to 90%, which you can see highlighted here, because by the time they get to 90%, we can say, absences are not impacting performance. And that's really, it's a hard, this is a slide that doesn't always make me smile, but it helps us drill down and say, all right, for students who are in the area, say, for students five, 11, and 12, we're so close. We're so close. What do we need to do as a school community to wrap around that kid so we can get them up to 90% where we aren't as concerned about missing opportunities and it affecting performance? And for students 13, four, and seven, we're saying, we're having frequent meetings, they're involved in EST and other school-based teams, they're involved in community teams on a weekly or biweekly basis because we're really saying this is a high level of concern, and we aren't sure that what we've been trying is working or there's been a recent event that has caused another fall. Okay? So that's really how we're using data, and I think it's been awesome to have the tools at the SU level to do that. And then this just shares a little bit about the difference between what we're seeing for SU-level absenteeism versus a cohort. So this is the number of students in each grade who have experienced 20 or more absences. So I think what's important here is that we were realizing that, yes, 66 students, 56 students is a lot of kids to serve from one office, but we're scratching the surface on the need. And so how can we continue to build out teams? Luckily, we have homeschool coordinators and counselors in every building who are interested in supporting this work, and so we're now training into those areas so that they can help create models within their buildings that can help identify students earlier and help provide interventions in their schools. Sometimes that's about integrated student supports, the what does a student need to be able to come to school ready to learn? Sometimes it's much more about that family engagement work that is longer and deeper and harder to do, frankly. We also think that this data is really important because it has launched the new thing that I'm excited about, which is our Restorative Truancy Project. So what you see in this is that right now, my restorative truancy cohort is about 19 out of 56 are in high school, and we know that those high school years really matter. We could lose them even further depending on where they are in ninth grade. We also have plenty of 12th graders that we want to help get over the line. So that involves really targeted intervention of students. And we can see that because our model is not serving as many students as we would like to be at the high school level in general, Chris Young was able to bring up a great idea around creating a tutoring program to help provide support between now and the end of the fiscal year because we're going to keep this going through the fiscal year with support of a truancy coordinator, a truancy tutoring coordinator, to help meet the needs of more of the high school students who are just about to cross the line. So in March, the end of March, we had that first conversation with Elaine, with Chris coming and saying, what can we do? What can we build? Elaine said, go for it. By the end of April, we were hosting a meeting of, the first meeting was seven, and then we had two more join us for a restorative truancy training. We wanted to get community members involved in helping to serve these students who needed help with tutoring. So as of this week, we have had 17 students who have been referred. We have seven tutors with schedules. We are not tutoring, we are not tutoring full days any day yet. We are also not asking volunteers to serve more than a half a day in our tutoring classroom. That would be a lot to ask, but we're finding that they are willingly staying longer. And so we're very excited about the promise of this program, not just at the high school level, but across the Supervise Reunion to help meet needs of students. And next year, the high school has invested in a staff position focused on working with the students who most need support in restorative truancy work. And so- And so as they make that shift, we are looking at where are we going to go? Our office is going upstream. We are looking at who in the cohort of the NCSU who are currently truant, are in that pre-K to second grade range, and we're going to steer our team towards intervention for those folks because we know that those years are critical. If they're not reading and have those math foundations by third grade, they're much more likely to increase on a track towards truancy and have more struggles in school in general. So that's the new thing that I'm very excited about. And that's our truancy work in general. I do have a video that was created by the AOE. I don't know if we have time. I can't see the time from here.
I'm sure it belongs to...
I think it's about four minutes long. And it just gives a sample from...
We should see it.
Okay, great. So this features our NCSU school system and staff and families, but it also includes some of the other four pilot programs of community schools.
Community schools look very differently depending on the very specific needs of the community that they're serving.
So what we all have very different projects. The outcomes are all the same among other schools. We want increased community engagement. We want a safer school. We want a more equitable school.
All schools seek to be community schools, but this model helps, I think, to prioritize what it could look like.
Basic needs have to come first in order for children to learn.
Where we see that change in student outcomes, and this is just an example, I have a high school student who is on the fringe of dropping out, who is not going to early college this year because of the resources that standard [inaudible] predominantly helps provide.
We have students pursuing any number of fields that are related to or completely different from what they're getting in school.
Not all child learns the same as the next. She prefers to be a grease monkey, which I'm perfectly okay with. Her father is a mechanic. My son's father is also a mechanic. So for me, I feel like it's reinforced importance of education for her, but it's also instilled in her the want.
So I think it does give students a sense that school isn't confined to, you know, this physical space, and there are more opportunities for them. And we can connect with them with those opportunities.
So we see this multi-generational distrust in the system, right? And understand that our crew are really responsible for shifting that mindset.
So that people understand that the building is a space for the community.
As a place for community to gather, to have conversations, to kind of personalize education where that means.
So to have someone who can maneuver their schedule to be out in the community, to be that liaison to the resources, services, supports, and also to get to know the needs of the community by being in it is really unique.
We've been able to partner with other organizations where in the past maybe we have competed for services and programming, and now we are working more collaboratively together.
This environment, the physical, emotional, spiritual environment where it meets, be accessible to students and cannot do them harm.
Do they feel like their culture and language that they bring is respected and valued in classroom?
One of our goals in terms of that equity pillar was to do some school-wide reads. And now we do, now we're doing supervisory-wide reads, also holding conversations and facilitating conversations at our local library.
If we don't do that work, then our students, who might be typically marginalized students, won't have access to their education.
If the learning was more accessible, more relevant, more flexible, and the teachers could see the results of wrapping services and coordinating services between students, then we should see a reduction in absenteeism in ninth grade. We saw that reduced by almost 50%, which is crazy, right?
What I want people to know is that every building needs community schools coordinator. Every single building needs somebody dedicated to this work. And it's been really great to see youth just really come out and become themselves whatever that may be. It's been super incredible. I think it's, yeah, it's hard to realize that the grant's ending.
I went to Philadelphia to that national conference. I was in shock. There are 3,000 people that are doing the same work, but among five community school coordinators in Vermont, right? So I just think the community school approach is something that, whose time has come.
Happy to answer questions?
Yeah.
Just as a community partner, can't say enough about the wonderful work that you all have done here. And really, I think Samantha, what you said, like having, that you've always done this, but now having a person who wakes up every single morning thinking about equity across your apartment, across your whole supervisory union, lifts up the work, right? And you hold it with such a high regard at the top. You're so inclusive and caring and compassionate about everyone that you serve that it, I think, invites people into a movement that you created across your schools and across community partners. And I just hope the work continues. And it's so vital and really has supported families and students in ways that schools just aren't equipped to do, aren't resourced. And it's just amazing. I am so appreciative of your work.
I'm going to say the same. I'm very touched right now. It sends me back to when I was, my first position actually, when I moved to Vermont from Africa, with the Family School Partnership Coordinator at the Burlington School District. I had a mobile office. They provided me a little corner in every building, at the same time allowed me to work wherever I wanted to. So I met parents at their homes, at parks, at the restaurant. What I love about this work is my understanding of social-emotional learning, SEL, so-called. It's the connection. Without that foundation, I don't see us educating or seeing the readiness of our children to be there and ready to learn. So I'm very appreciative of all you do, and I believe in what you do should be in every building in our state. We are a small community. We have a large, beautiful land, but in reality, we are a small community. It's beautiful. Thank you for all you do.
I'll just say, everyone in school is tasked with responsibilities that are above and beyond what they signed up for, right? And unless there is a torchbearer for this kind of work, it will fall by the wayside. And it's not out of a desire to ignore the work. It's out of a sense of being overwhelmed. So it is critical work. And so beyond what happens with funding, we will be committed to providing a community schools coordinator for North Country because it's just too important to let it go by the wayside.
So I think my question is about that, and I apologize for not fully understanding the details of the funding sources and the ending of the funding sources. So what in fact could that mean? And from that pilot, was it not intended that it would grow and continue? Real, authentic questions, not, I just don't know that I fully understand the why not.
Well, community schools grant came out, and it was a three-year grant. And it's ending, although some money was reallocated, I believe, by the legislature. We're not sure. It's at a smaller amount. I'm not sure what that will mean for our community school program moving forward. But Sam is also aggressive about seeking other grant sources to be able to fund our work and referred to the Bernie earmark. And so we have those vans that are Bernie buses that get folks around the kingdom. And you can talk further about how you intertwine those programs and what your plans are for moving forward with your funding. And as I said, from an SU standpoint, we will find a way just to finance, if there are grant funds that fall short, we'll find a way to finance that locally.
So when we, we were applying for the Bernie earmark and being strategic about how that spending plan would work. And so we had designed it so that we could spend staffing funds later. So that's what we'll largely be leaning on next year in terms of maintaining our staff, which are by far the most important thing. It is really helpful to be able to meet those needs of students for, I mean, maybe you've read, the mattresses, the shoes, the things that allow kids to be full participants and the opportunities available in their schools. But if we don't have the humans to do the work and build the relationships and maintain relationships at the community level with partners to find resources that can't be achieved through grant funds, then, you know, what are we doing? So right now, we've got a solid plan for next year. My hope with the funds that were approved, I believe have been approved through the legislature this year. It is at a limited, a more limited level, but ultimately, what we'd like to see is the opportunity for some of these pilots to continue for another two to five years because we'd like to be able to have measurable outcomes that can prove the value of the programs. And I was asked in the legislature a few months ago, "Well, why did you structure it three years if you needed four or five years to prove effectiveness?" And I had no answer to that because it was the legislature who structured that, not us. And so, you know, really, we as a cohort, as a group of five schools who were engaged in this work, need to have the support to include measurement of the programming over those additional years. That's going to be essential because I don't see that we're ever, that we're soon going to be fully covered under any school budget, any local budget. And that's, that's not like a doomsday scenario. That's that we have lots of needs that we are meeting for students. And as we continue to meet mental health needs of students out of an education budget, we're going to have to make choices like that. So we are lucky to have grant writers on staff like me, like a few other folks in Central Office who can find those opportunities. We also, we will continue to work to leverage other funding to be able to provide those community outreach activities where we can build those relationships. So it doesn't, you know, it might mean looking for a different source to provide some of those opportunities for connection and relationship building. But at the core, I'm really committed to the truancy work right now. I think that that's the most promising work that we have going, and it takes a team to do it well.
It's really human-heavy, sorry, it's really human-heavy work, right? It's, every individual family has different barriers and different circumstances, and it takes the time to be able to work with that family to build trust in order to make any sort of an impact that is lasting and positive. So you can't just say, "Well, someone in the school is going to take care of that," or "After hours, the principal's going to do an outreach." It really takes someone who has the, "This is my work and this is my priority," and really sussing out what is it that is the barrier. And that changes over time, as you saw with some of the data, like, you know, housing might be stable and there's still truancy issue, and then all of a sudden, we have a housing issue, and then that creates another dip in the data. So somebody who knows that family can help through that, but someone coming in who doesn't have that relationship or understand the dynamic may not have any kind of an impact in that situation.
And we can also recognize where are those key moments, where small schools are moving into big schools, like the junior high or the high school, for example. We know that those are critical points at which we lose those connections with families. And so if my team can say, "Oh, I've known that kid. I knew that kid in fifth grade, and they were really connected with a staff member at this small school." And I bet that person would be willing to come back for another meeting at the high school level to help restart the relationship, you know? Just having that kind of higher-level picture, offering it at the SU level is really, really great. And also just like showing up when you say you're going to. If you, if you check a kid's attendance every day and are talking to their parents, saying, "Okay, you know, what happened today? Oh, well, you missed the bus." Well, we'll just go get them and bring them to school, and it's not a lost day. It's, you've got to be really nimble.
Deeply [inaudible] and hard to hear of the constriction in resources around something that seems to be so important to the work of education, families, and communities. So to even think that the five pilots will be strapped in their resourcing, much less the broader statewide commitment to expansion. I'm hopeful to envision that these very examples become a really important part of the Visioning Commission, or whatever it's going to be called, that I think made it through the legislative session. Because that is what education is trying to do at its best in bringing it all into the safest place families have in a lot of cases. And recognizing what to do about that from a funding piece where mental health issues are being supported in our schools, that rub has been like, as long as any of us probably have been anywhere touching education. So I'm going to try and remain hopeful that a commission can look deeply at all of that and hopefully that your voices will be elevated in those conversations because it's really impactful. And thank you.
So this is just me thinking out loud, and Samantha, you brought up funding and how to make this sustainable. And maybe it's more a question for us as a board, which is, how do we help that become sustainable? Because our job is around quality of education that's equitable for all students, that's sustainable and affordable into the future. And you just described, oh, we have a 13.5% increase in the education budget this year, and what you described isn't even part of it. It's grants.
Correct.
And so what is the real cost of education now? And who should bear the brunt of that cost? As Lyle is thinking out loud, sorry. Where is the agency of Human Services in this with their budget and their contribution to education now? Because you are doing that work in large part with students, and you can't go back. You can't stop them. If suddenly the grant is gone and then Samantha goes away, then you've got what those kids believed in in the beginning, which was, "Nobody cares about me. They're gone now." And so how do we sustain that? And I'm not looking for any answers today.
Interesting. We were talking about this over lunch.
Just looking to the Secretary of Education, Saunders, you know, how do we bring, how do we circle everyone around this issue? The other agencies, and how do we contribute, how can they contribute to that? So I'm just thinking out loud and not looking for any answers. But our problem, as I see it, is sustaining it. How do we afford that? And how do we make it so that all students are getting what you're doing? I'm not sure every student in the state of Vermont is getting what you're getting with all the data points and how you're keeping track and what you're providing. How do we make that work? So I'm just throwing that out on the rug.
I'd be interested to analyze what percentage of any school's budget is in terms of mental health supports or supports that are beyond our educational mission.
Interesting. We were talking about exactly that point at lunch. Chris and Mohammed and Tom, this exact conversation, which is, you know, what is the purpose of schooling? And where, where do the dollars come from to really provide those robust educational support systems? That Vermont was the first in the country to put in place in 1997 with the home key, right? We were a forerunner in the idea that there should be no student left, right? No student left behind, but also no student falls through the cracks. And part of making sure the students don't fall through the cracks is having a robust educational support system that is more than just academics. And so, you know, this idea of who's responsible for paying for that? Is that the Ed Fund? I don't know, right? Like, these are really important questions I think we've got to wrestle with as we go forward, right? And, you know, should those costs be distributed more broadly across communities, across the state? Should your community bear all of those additional costs? These are really important questions I think we have to address.
For six years, I was the principal at Newport City Elementary School. And many of you have heard that story maybe, but I, my first year there, there had been six principals in five years prior to my coming, and there was a little bit of the house on fire, a little bit of need to get lots of systems in place. It was both supports and accountability at the same time. And we had 890 restraints, escorts, and seclusions in one year. Not a learning institution at all. By year three, we saw pretty dramatic decreases in that and really dramatic improvements in the learning environment. By my sixth year there, my last year there, it was under 100, under 50, rather. It was 44. So, you know, almost 900 to 44. It's the right work. It was expensive work. We put in lots of supports, put in lots of systems, and I felt as though... And I felt as though we did and still, it still exists there, a really comprehensive system of supports for kids. And even through COVID, you know, if COVID had hit prior to that, I'm not sure Newport City Elementary would have been redeemable. But they're in a better place having had that, gone through that experience. But it's expensive work. And you're right, who pays for that? And is it mental health? You know, we have school-based clinicians and we have an increased number of guidance counselors that are, that are sort of quasi-school-based clinicians without the, you know, they're providing a lot of supports. We have behavior specialists. We have lots of folks that we never thought of 15 years ago and putting in our schools. But if we don't do the work, the cost is 890 restraints, escorts and seclusions. And everybody's education is impacted at that point. So, it is an interesting conversation and likely to take lots of dips and turns over the next year or so, if not beyond.
I think the cost is a lost child. And we cannot put a price on the cost of a lost child.
Absolutely true.
I mean, I think that's the framework. I always put it on. I think you, there is no, there is no dollar figure that can ever be put on a lost child, right? And, you know, it's interesting as I look at your numbers, 170 McKinney Vento children, right? In my mind, math, that's almost 5% of your SU population that's homeless. Those are big numbers. Those are really big numbers. That's a lot of need. That's a lot of responsibility on your school, on your supervisory union to provide services for that. So, thank you for all you're doing, right? Like, this is incredibly impactful work. And it's, I think it's very much at the fabric of Vermont has always looked at public education as being not just about the academics, but about the whole child. No child left behind, right? Before, that was the federal tagline, right? Like, no child left behind. So, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
I'm just curious, because there were five grant recipients. And my first question is, do you collaborate or communicate with the other four grant recipients and sort of share ideas and what you're doing? And then, my second question is, I mean, it sounds like you were doing, sort of tipping in this direction before you got the grant, which is terrific. For all of the other schools that are out there, have you been contacted? Or do you guys do anything to sort of say like, here are some things that we're doing that a school district that wasn't a grant recipient could do just to sort of improve the supports that are available to children?
So, through the McKinney Vento network, I have been asked to provide a lot of technical assistance to other McKinney Vento liaisons and to talk through ways that we are using McKinney Vento specific funds, which are a part of that braid, to improve student access to learning. And so, I think that has been one way that I frequently get phone calls because the law is very specific and it can be, you can be very creative in supporting students to meet the letter of that law. And we have had some experience, a few years of experience in applying for sub-grant funds through McKinney Vento that have helped us think about how to get really good at that. We, through the cohort, the pilot school cohort, we have regular quarterly meetings with them. But also, we're starting to get really close. And that's one of the things that I want to keep going. This Friday, I'm meeting the CABT school principal because we've gotten close through the cohort. And we just don't have enough time on a Zoom call with the rest of the cohort to talk about the areas where they have done some work around robotics that we would like maybe be able to expand our STEM work into or things that we've done around food security that could look very similar in another rural community that's similarly situated to ours. So, we always need more time to do that kind of work. But yes, it is happening. And thanks to press coverage, we've also had outreach from other areas of the state where folks have said, I want to know more about this piece of the programming that you're working on. Like, maybe it's around transporting students. We don't feel comfortable transporting students. What did it take to be able to get there with staff and with vehicles? Those kinds of very specific questions. Yeah, so there is some. There's always a need for more time to do more.
I just want to thank you for what you're doing with this work. It is really important. And then, my travels across the state, I continue to hear that there is increasing demand for schools to meet the health and overall wellness needs of students and families. But it does need to be part of our broader conversation as a state as we're developing that unifying vision for what it means to educate the child and help them achieve their fullest potential. So, as we move forward as an agency, we're also having these conversations. I think it's a good suggestion too to really kind of unpack the data and understand those costs. And you've had some real success in braiding funding. So, looking to how you've done that successfully, I think would be helpful for us as we began as a state to think about those recommendations of how this type of comprehensive programming could be launched and then sustained, right? Is the key component moving forward. And as we're thinking about developing a listen and learn tour, I think there's a lot of value in having a focus on the community schools, the cohort of the five supervisory unions who've been participating to really share what you've learned through this experience and some strategies that you might put forward as we think about, you know, scaling for the state. So, thank you for what you're doing.
I also just want to say, two of the kids who came for tutoring this week have missed 100 days of school this year. And neither of them showed up for their first day of tutoring earlier this week. And they both showed up today. And so, like, you just never know. You have to keep trying. And being creative is one of the things that Elaine has really made possible. So, I have to thank the leadership because that's really where you have the ability to maneuver.
I was really excited to have you guys come today. This has been something that I've been really looking forward to is hearing this presentation because I've sort of been following through the newspaper, you know, the community schools. And I think conceptually, it is such an amazing idea. It's the slideshow, I think, really told a really compelling story. And I really hope you guys continue this work because it's just, it's great to see the short-term effects. And I think it will be really helpful to see the long-term effects as well.
And to Tammy's point about the cost of a child, you know, I was, I was a kid of trauma 50-some years ago. And I had community supports. I had, you know, my extended family. I had folks that, my education, I was reasonably intelligent. And those things were really things that benefited me. Our students today don't have those extended supports. And for me, it is very much a moral imperative that we do this work because we have so many kids that will lose if we don't. And so, for me, it is the cost of a child and/or of many children if we don't do this work. So, very passionate about that.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to add, when you think about the alternative, right? What is the alternative? Like, you have 100 days of school, but the children have missed here. I mean, the children have missed in lots of places. And I think the alternative, what is the alternative, right? You can't punish kids and families to go to school, right? Like, so the alternative is investing in relationships. And relationships are human capital that cost money, right? Like, I think when we think about what needs.
I like to say, force kids to get to school. The point is, we should not be forcing. We mentioned the word accessible. How can we, how can we get to them rather than expecting them to come to us all the time? Can we not, can we not be flexible? But they have to. So, those, that's what we need to rethink, actually.
That's right. It takes people.
We can go to them. When COVID, when COVID hit, we became creative. We never had virtual learning. But now, we are all savvy about having a virtual meeting. Currently, there are some people behind the screen listening to us probably.
That's right.
So, this is a need. This is a must in our education. Without, without this format of educating, you should not even think about academics, honestly speaking. There is no readiness of learning. Every mother out there is struggling economically. Inflation, housing. My first year in my role as an ML director, I dealt with 16 different cases of housing situation, parents facing eviction. I had to work in housing.
You don't know what that's like, do you? As you get out tents.
Yeah, you have to. You have to help them secure housing before you even touch them.
What is education policy, right?
Education policy is not just about academics. It's about kids. And to your extent, point, right? And to Lyle's point is, we center education around the kid, right? It isn't just about academics. It's about what does that kid need to be safe, healthy, engaged and reach their full potential? And school's part of that. The academics are part of that. But there's a lot of other things that go into, right? Go into that. We have to really ask ourselves, what is education policy? And if we centered on the kids and what the kids need and we go to where the kids are and the families are, then we, then, then, then we're, now we're cooking, right? Thank you all. This is such important work.
All right. So, we are a little ahead of schedule. I don't know if Katie Ballard or Jackie Kelleher are with us.
Are they virtual?
They were virtual.
Yes, we have Jackie virtual.
Oh, great, okay. And my understanding is that Katie, thank you, may join. So, Jackie, welcome. So, this is the Special Education Advisory Council update. As you may recall, the Special Education Advisory Council was formed to provide guidance with respect to special education and related services for children with disabilities in the state. Katie Ballard, the Chair of SEEP, provides updates to the board every few months. And she was last here in January when she was discussing critical staff shortages in special education. And SEEP's focused this year on transition services. So, I think, if I remember correctly from my notes, Jackie, you were going to join and sort of touch on those two points. And there was some mention of a letter that was going to be developed and sent. And I don't know if that's ringing any bells with you. But I will turn it over to you and let you provide the update.
Excellent. Can you hear me all?
Yes, yes, we can.
Great. And I don't, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I have an echo.
We don't hear the echo, but that might be bothering you.
That's all right. I taught eighth grade. Bring it on, whatever happens. So, good to see you. I am Jackie Kelleher. I am the co-chair of the Special Education Advisory Panel. Thank you for introducing our purpose. I don't want to saturate you with slides, but I did put some slides together to give you an overview of what we've been working on this year. I will say that some of you know me is that prior to my now current position as Executive Director of Vermont Family Network, which is your statewide nonprofit that provides no-cost services to families with children and youth, disabilities, disorders and special complex healthcare needs. We are required to be on the panel as part of legislation. And it's just been an honor to go from my role before, which was your Agency of Ed State Director of Special Education, where I got to spread peace, love and compliance throughout the land, to be able to continue that work in this new capacity. So, Katie will join as she can, but I put an overview together if I'm able to show these slides. Are you able to see them?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so, we went through the purpose. I'm going to give you an overview of some of our efforts. I'm going to bring it back to critical shortage because we continue to do a deep dive into Vermont and some of our thoughts on the remedy. Our panel is representative in terms of professionals, those who are serving in state agencies. But we're also 51% majority of parents of kids with disabilities or individuals with disabilities. So, we get such rich, deep perspectives as we really deliberate some of the unmet needs of students, but also, you know, personnel in the state. So, keep coming back to that critical shortage area piece. To set the context, you know, something that as a panel we have been talking about is we are data-rich as a state. We, you know, advise based on data that's provided by Agency of Ed and other federal and state resources. So, like, in a nutshell, we are serving over 15,000 kids with individualized education programs or IDPs. But we're also in such great need of resources. And I'll highlight bullet number two. When you look across the nation, the United States, when weighted for population, Vermont has the highest percentage of kids with an IDP categorized as emotional disturbance. And that data is a fast fact from the Office of Special Ed Programs. And that data point was from spring 2020. I can't even imagine how that, you know, percentage has increased since it was, you know, published by OSIP, which means that, you know, our schools are in such, you know, need for the resources to support, you know, those with ED that typically are complex mental health issues. You know, so that's a theme I was hearing in your conversation earlier, which will continue to be without the day. Another bullet to point out that we've talked about as a panel is also based on the federal government data is that we're one of the states with the highest percentage of children and youth that are going outstate for their education, where districts are unable to meet those needs in the school community. And so, and without, you know, placements that are appropriate or that are easy to get to, since we all know that transportation in a rural state is difficult, kids are going out more and more from Vermont. And we stand out as a state that way. So, you know, that's an example of some of the complex conversations that we have as we're trying to determine how best to advise. Some highlights from this year was re-establishing our relationship with the Agency of Ed and its staff as AOE became fully staffed and getting to know some really innovative, amazing folks that bring also, you know, new perspectives to special education and 504. We've been working on recruitment. We have been focused on diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging as a panel and making sure that it is infiltrated across all the topics that we cover and the recommendations that we put forward. We've been advising on the State Performance Plan, those 17 different indicators that the Office of Special Ed Programs uses to determine if SEAs, like our AOE, if we're successfully implementing the IDEA as written. So, we are that sounding board that works with the AOE staff as they set targets, as they look at, are we meeting them? And if there's slippage, why is that a factor? So, we ask those really critical questions. And again, it's amazing to also have the parent perspective at this, at this table. It's a really rich conversation. We've unpacked the role of the paraprofessional. That's a theme that keeps up. That's a theme that keeps up. Nearly every meeting we have, we talk about the role of the para and how critical that role is and how to work with the complexities of the para also despite a para shortage. And then ultimately, what you will be receiving is we have a document of unmet needs. We've done an alignment with those needs to the State Performance Plan indicators. So we're working in tandem with the AOE, and we're able to report out to you how these things are interconnected and how they have intersectionality. And then finally, as Katie had talked about in January, we continue to be really concerned about the critical shortage in special ed and have prepared some recommendations that I'll share some highlights today. Our Unmet Needs Document is a thick, rich document with lots of stories and anecdotes to bring to life these five categories that we've been really leaning in on. And so when you cluster our topics together, it falls into the IEP Meeting Processes and Services, Parent-School Collaboration, Teacher Training. Literacy continues to be, and part of that too, is we do have folks for public comment that literacy's been definitely on their mind this year, as it has been in the capital. And so we have a lot of folks that are particularly concerned about the dramatic disparity between students with and students without disabilities and their performance on various assessments. And then discipline and bias continues to be another area we focus in. And we have conversations about things that you were just talking about moments ago, absenteeism and intruency and trauma and mental health and anxiety, friendship, kindness, that student engagement piece is so key. The complexity of our systems, the family engagement, lack of training, those are pieces that don't imagine that we're sitting around just like, oh, woe is us, does the state, all these things. It really is about, what is a plan of action that we can recommend to be able to do that? We've even been talking about the digital divide and a conversation around ChatGPT and artificial intelligence. Why would we be discussing that? Because we're hearing that the field is now incorporating those technological tools to write IEPs. So we need to be talking about it and be fully cognizant of the different processes and procedures that are happening to ensure that every student with disability gets a free, appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. But yeah, technology is, not just a system of technology, but the tools that are being utilized to prepare paperwork is really been something that we have been interested in and concerned about. Focusing here, I'm not sure if Katie has joined or not. I did hear someone come in, but please let me know. For the critical shortage area, this is something that in 2022, the Agency of Education was able to do a year-long study, getting perspectives from practicing educators and para-professionals in our special education districts. There were some surveys that went out, and there were open-ended questions about why are you leaving the field? Why would you not recommend this field to somebody else? I mean, they weren't quite phrased that way, but it was really trying to tap into spill the tea, tell us the story. We got, the Agency of Ed got 358 voluminous responses to those questions. You know, it really, it brought us to tears as we were reading what the perspective is from our educators, who are obviously so essential for teaching and learning and improving outcomes for our students with disabilities. So we recognize the critical shortage. It wasn't just COVID. It wasn't just COVID, right? It was happening before COVID. We have a COVID context here. Special education and related service was particularly challenging to staff and people leaving the fields 2.5 times more likely in these areas compared to general education. Pre-COVID context, some of the easy solutions, the Band-Aid solutions, were really, they weren't all connecting to a big picture, long-term plan. And people were going really quickly to, can we address it through provisional licenses? Can our student teachers actually go into the classroom before they graduate? Really some creative ideas. But again, not working together, it was just Band-Aid approaches in pre-COVID that continues on post-pandemic. So here are some insights from some of the Vermont Special Education Directors in 2022 that we considered as, that we did with educator perspectives. And it was 80 students on a caseload. Like, it's impossible. Another SU talking about, there's just, like insuring faith in the LRE, we just cannot find people. Like, what, Kelleher, what do we do? Panel, what do we do? And they're being extremely stressed out about not seeing an end in sight to the openings that aren't being filled and having difficulties being able to plan accordingly. We went through, part of our conversation this year has been with schools who have, you know, parents will drop their kids off at 8:00, those that are dropping them off, and they wait in the parking lot. And at 8:15, we'll get a call, come pick up your child, because we don't have the behavior interventionist or the para support. And our conversation has been, is that happening with all kids, gen ed as well? Because that's a little bit discriminatory if we're not letting kids into the school because of the lack of staff. So we've been really trying to understand and have empathy for why the health and safety of school, but what is the solution? Because if our kids aren't accessing their education because of, they don't have the para availability, like, that's not okay. Recruiting special ed is super challenging. You know, for what LEAs are talking about, I'm at DEFCON 5 in need of special ed teachers. And I'm looking at different employment agencies, and that type of rate does not fit into our budget. And our LEA, IDEA budgets are so sparse as they are. People are really trying to look creatively at what to do. But like, looking, and we would also look at things like the different health ads through the typical place, the employment ads and track like how long vacancies have been on the list. And we've looked at like the number of repostings, which are just, that's really, that's so concerning about how do you plan for that appropriate programming when you don't have the, you can't guarantee those folks are going to be in place to do the implementation. In our report, you'll see several data points that come from the survey. I just wanted to highlight one, and it's a two slider. It's one question. And for respondents that were talking about this question, what could we do at the school level or the LEA level to improve special ed recruitment or retention? What would it be? And I think that you see here in these two slides, some ideas and of course wages. But look how big support is. And by support, unpacking into the qualitative survey responses that people had, it was feeling supported and heard. It was having a leadership that recognizes the importance and the equity between special ed and general ed and wanting to do what they can to help support those special educators and the para-professionals. You know, paras who were writing about how much they wanted to be involved in things like the IEP meetings, but that was inconsistent from district to district about the role of the para. And that type of support from the teacher to the para or teachers with teachers or leadership and teachers, that was a big number. And this is something we can do with some systems change. If you also look at the numbers around respect, I mean, this is low-hanging fruit. This is about school climate, to be able to ensure that teachers and paras and related service providers are feeling respected and that they're recognized. So this goes on into the next, this is the continuation here. Okay. So also, the other things to improve is another high point is just how complicated caseload management is. And the amount of the paperwork burden, but also navigating all of the moving parts of who is involved within that IEP is something that many new educators are coming in saying, I was not prepared for that. I was not prepared for the reality of what it is in a school system to be navigating this sea of paperwork. And it's preventing me from direct instruction. It's preventing me from being creative and innovative and problem-solving around challenging behaviors. It's all paperwork and all the cases that I'm navigating. So it was a combination of those. And then I also wanted to point out is that the respondents talked about how important it is to have a special education mentoring program. And mentoring is inconsistent from district to district, but there is an awareness that special ed mentoring is slightly different than general ed mentoring. And it's not appropriate to have the PE teacher mentoring the new special educator or somebody who's got 17 miles of ground to cover to be able to get to their mentee in a timely way. So even geography was part of that barrier. But the importance of investing in a mentoring program, you see in the literature and you'll see in our recommendations, does lead to improved recruitment and retention of special educators and related service personnel. So recognition, again, we kind of clustered these items that were presented just in the bar graph I showed, under this recognition. And this is like the breakdown by numbers of what people said was so important to them and what could change to have them stay in the field. And then the other items really clustered into workload. You know, your student staff ratio, your paperwork overload, your case management. It was a smaller number, but really profound qualitative information around the lack of collaboration with gen ed and special ed and that there seems to be in some districts an equity issue. And the perception with special ed is I have all this extra work, my paperwork, my caseload, and then my instruction, and we have the same pay rate, or we're getting the same level of recognition and incentives, and it doesn't seem right or fair. So it might have only been four people, but they really spoke from their heart what was really troubling them about this lack of effective communication and collaboration. And then planning time was another one that kept popping us, having that adequate planning time in your day or co-planning time, especially those that reported being co-teachers in a collaborative co-taught classroom, is that that's really essential to be able to do the job right and well and to implement the IEP with fidelity. So a few more words from the field while I have you is the very challenging behaviors that, yes, existed pre-COVID, but that exacerbated, as we know, particularly around trauma and mental health and anxiety. Kids struggling to form friendships, you know, basic, I shouldn't say basic, but like that social reciprocity that got really delayed. And we're seeing that continue to be problematic for our students. And then without having consistent behavioral intervention supports and para supports with the challenging behavior, it's creating this really burnout factor. It's persisting beyond COVID. Needing more supportive LEAs is another. Hiring maybe a case manager who's just, that's their job is navigating those cases. And there are some excellent specialists that they do that right and well, and that's what they like to do. And for the teachers who are teaching, are able to give that direct instruction and focus on their pedagogy, that's some of the suggestions that were coming out, hiring transition coach, individual support for special educators, more about the mentoring, flexibility in case management, structured roles I just mentioned. You know, there is still a bit of a disconnect from some of our, in our conversations as a panel about Vermont's multi-tiered systems of support, or Vermont MTSS. And it's really been highlighted as the special ed rule changed with the removal of the discrepancy model to identify specific learning disabilities. You know, folks were expected to rely more on their multi-tiered systems of support, which ultimately led to the delay in that particular rule change. So some of the respondents that we studied were just like, can we all get on the same page with that model or whatever models are being encouraged? But, I'm sorry, what's our question?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought I heard a question. There were ideas about course reinforced first, programs for loan forgiveness, supporting as a special educator, pay being more level across the state, a maximum minimum caseload. And as a special educator myself and former state director, that's a really deep dive conversation because I see where that has worked when it's been in legislation or when it's really not worked. But folks were talking about some of his more complex behaviors, like they're an N of one, but really they're spending like quadruple that time being able to support that child as they should to meet those needs. But so the number, that's a deeper conversation. You know, working beyond the school hours to meet family needs, that paperwork needing to be streamlined, coaching needs to be recognized as a part of the job because it is important to have that mentoring and coaching. But we have to recognize that whether it's STE or some other incentive, how are people being fairly compensated to be able to support and grow the profession? So these, again, were words by the field, and I will end with some thoughts from some of the para educators who responded, is that the pay equity for what they're doing and not having, being able to be guaranteed that there's summer employment, not being able to qualify in many cases for unemployment when those contracts are up and not being paid during vacations, not getting paid for some of the holidays. So that continues to be kind of a respect and equity issue. And there's that respect factor again, is how do we elevate the role of the para? How do we recognize and celebrate that and engage them in ways that are appropriate for those that have so much more to offer who are getting frustrated because they don't feel validated as a para professional, they are not considered professional staff? So I have our recommendations, but I'm just pausing to see if anyone had some questions about anything I have just talked your ear off about.
Hey, Jackie, Tammy, how are you?
Hey, Tammy, hi.
Nice to talk to you. It's good to see you again. And thanks again for all your work with this group in the Vermont Family Network. Very appreciated. Hey, you know, the things that you're popping up in your survey are popping up nationally, right? And that's not a good thing, right? We don't want it to happen anywhere. We certainly don't want it to happen in Vermont. But I know that OSIP is putting a lot of time and money into these issues, and they have the Cedar Center stood up now that's providing technical assistance to SEAs on these issues, model policies, model practices, guidance, cost effectiveness studies and things along those lines. I'm just wondering whether or not you guys have been able to coordinate or connect with them yet. The agencies working with Cedar?
Yes. Jackie, if you'd like to respond, but also our special ed director is on the call as well.
Great.
Yeah, 2021, I believe, we became a Cedar state.
Super.
And it has, yeah. So and you're absolutely right. What a fantastic federal resource that we have in that partnership.
Super.
And some of our recommendations, we looked at as a panel, what we thought and compared them to also what Cedar was recommending. So I'll stay kind of vetted what we're about to share out with you.
Super.
So I have some overarching, this slide says opportunities that other states are seeking, and this is coming from the Cedar Board, because they do hold together what everybody's trying to do about this. And I bolded mentoring because that is something that the Agency of Ed really started to explore and using Title II dollars to be able to support like a statewide mentoring approach around special education. And they're doing it more informally, and it sets a powerful opportunity for special educators in the field. And so one of our recommendations is like, can we continue to support that? It's called the Vermont Mentoring for Special Ed Excellence, or VEMC. And right now, it's an optional program, but it's a really neat model for people to have some more consistency in the way that they're addressing the needs of their early educators. Pay your own internship, certainly grow your own. Really tight partnerships with technical education centers that have some early childhood or some teaching initiatives that are happening. How are we connecting early and often at the CTE level? Leadership and effective communication, different tiers of para, salary based on demands, more flexibility around collaborative co-taught classrooms. We have in our state, you apply to be able to do this, and it was formerly Betty Roy, I believe. to, to do this and it was formerly Betty Roy, I believe, who was our, the co-taught lead with, with Agency of Ed, but there were just so few districts that were looking at this very powerful model that does help with recruitment and retention if you invest in it. And when I'm saying invest, not just money, it's even investing in the philosophy that this is like an approach or strategy that we're going to take for all of our students, but certainly our students with disabilities, you know, and attracting and retaining. Uh, some states, some, some states literally have an anonymous suggestion box, you know, for to get feedback, um, often and early from their educators and doing listening tours across the state. So, um, so the thoughts that the, the panel has is that alternate routes, they can be effective. I know that with the provisional licensing, we talked a bit about that, that that could get kind of wonky, but that was inconsistent from district to district. But, um, that district university partnership is that, you know, we really believe that connection is, is essential if you do the out routes to do this. Financial incentives, absolutely. The positive school climate, I mean, uh, we're, we're showing on our data, our Vermont data, and you're right, I think it was Tammy who said that, that reflects like the national, um, line of thinking as well, but like school climate is a huge predictor of somebody's going to stay. And that retention is going to happen when there is that shared sense of responsibility, when there's that, that collaboration that's happening and there's that support, pulling all of those recognition variables together and the workflow variables, these are things that we can do in a cost-effective way with high impact. Um, the, you know, the extent to which we have induction programs, so there's, there's mentoring and induction go together, but the induction is that the first two years, like what, you know, the, the, the number and nature of supports that a new teacher is getting beyond, you know, entering the, the field, like, you know, what does that look like for our state, since we know that works too? Leadership matters, access the quality curriculum, and I, I hope you're nodding because you're like, yeah, well, of course. But we're also saying, we agree and like whatever we can do to be part of the solution. Having schools, the LEAs and the colleges and the government agencies working together to do these things, not in isolation, but unified front, that leads to long-term solutions and, and thinking. And, um, expanding the, the resources like the VMC that we, that we talked about, um, think tanks with para-professionals get, they have so much to say, so much to inform us about, like really bring them in as well as our other practitioners. Our directors are fantastic, they are amazing. I find that when you really, you know, have that think tank with the practitioners though, you really get a, a deep understanding of the challenges and you can get to the root cause in a different way. But ultimately it's like pulling all of those perspectives together. Um, funding for para-professional pathways, messaging, the importance of, of teachers, you know, kind of like, can we get some opinion, you know, off eds out there, some articles, you know, raising awareness of, of just how important and exciting and wonderful this profession is in this time where people are just burnt out and tired, like really we need a champion to vitalize and fire folks up that this is the, you know, such an important work for the future. Housing incentives, um, we've talked about praxis as well, that that can be a barrier for some pathways to teaching is, um, being able to prepare for praxis one, then, you know, praxis two for those that are taking it. And just one more slide, I think, um, ensuring teacher and para-professional training is listed in the IEP. It is, it is one of those underutilized federal requirements that people who are responsible in, in whatever way to implement the IEP, that they get the training that they need. When you write it in the IEP, it must happen. So more promotion of, you know, this underutilized requirement, so like leaning in on what currently e- exists, you know, which leads to the other part about receiving training on effective communication and collaboration, like be intentional if that's a barrier, we can do some PD work around this piece and get people talking and understanding their roles and responsibilities. Parent engagement, parent training and counseling, that's another underutilized federal requirement. It's a related service, it's so often not, uh, used. And so promoting that, that parents who can extend the learning, who can, at, at home, parents who can be, um, modeling what's happening at school at home, or for parents to learn how to be better partners and equitable players at the table. Let's, you know, draw in from, uh, you know, this important requirement and use it to improve outcomes and ensure retention. Roles and responsibilities, uh, looking for grant funding and speaking with OSEP, you know, being like really, you know, looking very carefully at what's coming up in terms of requests for proposals, like RFPs that are related to, um, being able to develop some innovative grow your own models with LEAs and higher ed partnerships, huge. Higher ed improvements we've talked about where the, you know, teachers are reporting that what I learned in higher ed and now I got to the field, uh, there's a mismatch, you know, Carol Anne Tomlinson is great, but I'm like managing 40 kids here, how do I differentiate? Like having some real scenarios and simulations to truly, you know, experience what they're about to, to enter in is also going to help with that. And, you know, resource mapping for teachers, like in your area, what are the resources available to you? And, yeah, you know, that's, um, you know, something that the panel hasn't like dug deep into, but have talked about, boy, like where's the one-stop shopping? I'm in this particular geographical area in your Northeast Kingdom today, what are my resources at a teacher, as a teacher at my fingertips that could help me, whether it's problems of practice or an innovative pedagogy style, or where do I go to talk to other people about my teacher stress, which is very real? So local, um, resource mapping. And then, yeah, this was just the, the final piece is that, um, you know, we're still experiencing a, understanding, uh, learning loss and regression as, as a state of which our students with disabilities got particularly hit by, uh, you know, as a result of services being, um, delayed, I mean, and that's, and that's not a blame game at all. And I tell everybody, I was the state director of special ed, I did not get pandemic 101 and graceful, I didn't. And so, so many of us were trying to navigate this nebulous terrain together. And so it's just recognizing that, but, you know, what do we do about together since that's leading to a great deal of the burnout? So I will end there, stop sharing my, my screen, but, you know, that's an example of, of some of the, the things that our, our panel deliberates on and we want to be a part of the solution and advice, um, Agency of Ed and the State Board of Ed. And I'm seeing Heather here, who's just been a fantastic partner since she started on and we're excited to, to work with her moving forward. Um, so we just, you know, just want to be able to be as helpful as we can. And we've got some reports coming your way with some recommendations and if there are things that, you know, you have specific asks for doing a, a deep dive into, we just had a, a lot of passionate folks that have a can-do attitude rather than a cannot and want to be part of the solution of improving outcomes for all students with disabilities. So thank you.
Jackie, thank you. That was, that was a lot. That was a really comprehensive, um, presentation and I appreciate, I realize the amount of time that went into compiling the data, crunching the numbers, um, and really coming up with a really comprehensive list of suggestions. I guess my question is, what's the next step? Like you, you've got the data, you've got the recommendations, where do you go from here? Or maybe not you, but what, what's the next step?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm also, Katie Ball is here too. I want to make sure she is, is on here as well, but she might still be delayed. Um, I mean, you know, the recommendations that, you know, we, we pondered about and, you know, looking at Vermont data, there's, it's a lot, it's, it's overwhelming and it, I think it's even clustering into almost like an action plan, like a timeline. And it's something that the panel can, can recommend, but cannot do in isolation. You've got to be working with, with, with other, with other groups who have this shared responsibilities of preparing educators and supporting educators. I think that, you know, some of the steps are forming these partnerships to go through some of those recommendations and come up with some plans of, of action. And, you know, really understand, you know, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, but, you know, a, a, a mini spot analysis about the current state of, of education and looking at these recommendations and, um, you know, pulling together some action plans, um, looking creatively at, um, different federal funding streams and, and not just grants, but as I mentioned earlier, for example, you know, the, you know, Title II, it's dedication to educator preparation and improvements, um, you know, what can we, you know, elevate from, um, from that funding stream to ensure that it's, it's flowing through our retention? A lot, I want to say a lot of folks, oh wait, that's an exaggeration. There were, okay, a third of the state that, that we saw used ARCA funds directly around recruitment and retention. They really, they saw that early on and whether it was developing a statewide system of mentoring, which some states chose, chose to do, leveraged, uh, those, those resources. So it's, like, we've got some great ideas here, you know, it's pulling together a group beyond the panel, you know, having this panel representation where we can, uh, you know, figure out some cost-effective, uh, solutions. And I said, leading in on the panel again, because our 51% parent voice really gives you an important perspective about how to do this right and well.
Hey Jackie, I'm very appreciative of all your attention. Um, essentially back to what Tammy said earlier, of good times, because the ideas are brilliant, possible are there for all of them.
I think I have missed is, um, my knowledge of being a para-professional around here in Vermont, the highest percent, percentage of those folks tend to be college students and not from here. And they are in a, in a college setting, they're just trying to look for some income, um, to maybe pay a rent or fulfill their own needs. And once they graduate, they hit the road to some, somewhere else. So I'm saying this because that was my second job in Vermont. I was a para-professional at Flynn Elementary School in Burlington. When there is a snow day, you are not paid, although you rely on that little paycheck. You did not bake it snow, but you rely on your paycheck, so you don't get paid. So it's not very encouraging, to be honest, uh, it's tough. I just wanted to add that piece. As for co-planning or co-teaching that you mentioned, what I saw and what I still see in our structure is, um, at the foundation, how schools schedule, um, their day-to-day. Living room for teams to actually find an hour, 45 minutes to sit together and to do the planning together and teach. So many schools around us talk about.
And all outlooks, smart, afternoon, have best counsel.
There's no way. Many schools around us like the model of co-teaching, but what I'm saying that is basically the actual co-planning time is scarce, if it exists anywhere. I just wanted to add those two pieces and thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. And I know this is something that we've discussed with our new state director of special ed, Heather, some of her ideas that she has, but it's not my story to tell and I'm excited about them, uh, about different ways that we can look at planning, uh, so that we are incorporating best practices in our, not only for, for, um, our students, but for our, for our faculty to have that dedicated time to work together. And that's going to bolster that effective communication and collaboration, but also leadership is going to be key, a leadership that believes in that model, a leadership that supports that model, a leadership that's going to be dedicated to giving that gift of time to, um, engage in that, um, planning in general, but, but co-planning for co-taught models. Thank you for your comments.
Of Champlain Valley Educator Development Center, they just offered a co-planning session workshop, which was great on 11, on the 11th of April. Please connect with them, uh, they have some series and they can connect to you with the presenters and, uh, you can certainly benefit from it if you have the means again. It's all about the money, unfortunately. Thank you.
Questions or comments from board members?
We have our director of special education, if you'd like for her to share some of the priorities we have the agency that I think are aligned with many of these recommendations.
Sure.
So our special education director, Heather Willis Doxy is on the line.
Welcome Heather.
Hi, I'm very excited for the opportunity to get to connect with you guys. Um, this is the first time I've had the opportunity to meet you. Are you hearing an echo? I just want to make sure it's not just on my end.
We are not.
Okay, great. That's good, if it's just on my end, sorry. Um, anyway, I'm excited, I started here at the Agency of Education in December as the new state director for special education. Um, I have been able to have the pleasure to connect with the Cedar Group and join, um, this Vermont Cedar team. And we have monthly meetings where we are engaged with, um, multiple partners from the higher education institutions around the state, as well as our certification department and our special education department. And so I did want to share some really great things that, um, the Cedar Group is working on, just briefly. Um, one of our key priorities is supporting, um, para-professionals who are currently working in our state with becoming licensed educators. And so, uh, the University of Vermont has a specific program that they offer. Um, and there is, uh, there are some grant-funded opportunities for para-professionals to go through that program to get their, um, their teaching degree. And so we're tracking data on that. So in the future, if you'd like to have some more information, I can share more specific data, um, with you guys about how many para-professionals have completed that program or are currently enrolled in them. I just don't have that in front of me right now. Um, so that is something that we continue to work on and update each other on monthly. Um, the Cedar Group has also started an initiative to support principals. And so there's a principal education program and we're working with the current, um, Principals Association, um, to do a lot of work around inclusive leadership for our school leaders. So we're excited about that work. Um, and we also, um, worked to have a statewide job fair, um, this past March, um, that included all of the, um, school districts as well as the higher education, um, agencies that we work with. And so those are just a couple of the things that we're working on right now and the recent work that we've done. Um, I have been working with the panel, I attend all of the special education advisory panel meetings and executive, um, planning meetings as well. And I've been sharing, um, part of my vision, um, with the panel and, um, keeping them updated on that. And so some of the things, I want to share part of that with you right now is all about the inclusive practices and supports that we, um, provide and the continuum of supports we provide students. And one of the things that was talked about here today was co-teaching, um, and planning. And so part of that work that my team at the special education department at the AOE is working on is providing supports and training and initiatives that go towards inclusive scheduling. One of that is where you start with your school schedules and design, um, the school schedules around the students with disabilities and what their needs are. And that addresses, do they need co-teaching, support facilitation, para-support, what specific areas, all of that. And it really is going to, um, help be a model to support more collaborative teaching practices, get at how do you schedule that co-planning time? And I did write down your note about Champlain Valley doing a training, so I'll reach out to that director and find out the work and have them share that with our other directors on an upcoming call. Um, we also are doing some work around high leverage practices. Um, the, um, coordinating council for exceptional children just re-released, um, an updated guidance document about what are the most high leverage, high effective practices for working with students with disabilities. So we'll be rolling out some training, um, in collaboration with collaborative teaching processes, our practices, as well as the inclusive scheduling. And so there's just a couple of the things that we're doing right now to help with inclusion and supporting students. Earlier on in the presentation, we talked about one of the biggest needs is how do we support our students who have the most significant emotional and behavioral needs? And so that's another priority that my team is working on. Um, and we have a lot of different outside thought partners that we're working on in that work as well. So those are just a couple of the big things that we're working on and I'm excited to meet you guys and would be happy to come back and answer any questions that you might have in the future.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Heather? Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
I actually do have a question. So the, the slide presentation is based on their report and is that a report, like to whom does a report go? Are we one of?
Are we one of the people who get it, but also then to implement it must go elsewhere? I think that's a Jackie question.
Sure, sure, yeah, I'm looking. So you have a couple of reports coming your way, the current shortage area with more of the data and like specific action step recommendations. So that report is coming. And then our report on unmet needs, which is, as I said, a more elaborate of that grid that I showed you of those five topic areas about why they are unmet needs and some recommendations. So these go directly to the Agency of Education. And we have been providing those reports to the State Board of Education as well. And, you know, we just, when we continue to just, you know, work with Agency of Education, you know, how can we, how can we help, you know? How can we be a part of the solution in all this? So those are the two bodies that get the reports. And then Heather comes through all the meetings that you talked about and we're like, and now what? What's this? What do you need from us? What can we do? So we, that's how we engage in that dialogue throughout the year.
Well, and I'm remembering that you guys come on basically, you know, a quarterly basis. And I'm wondering if you would like to come back at our August meeting? Because that will be the, after the end of your fiscal year, I think the report will be done by then and then maybe it would be a good time, once board members have read the report, that maybe we can revisit the issue and just sort of think about the next steps from there.
Yes, it would be, it would be an honor to come, as our active team would come. And I would love to make sure that we're in person to be able to have that conversation.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you both. This has been really helpful, very extensive, and I just, I really appreciate all of the work that you are doing and also being able to present it to the board in an engaging fashion that, you know, really highlights the challenges that you're facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on our list is the post-secondary renewal recommendation. So I think we have Cassandra Ryan hopefully with us. We're still a little bit ahead of schedule, but not too far.
Suzanne, Cassandra.
Her boss is on the call. Her boss is on the call.
Oh, sure, okay. I just wanted to make sure that she was here before we like-
She's here. Matt House Gray is also here along with Deb Lawrence.
Okay, perfect. So this is a post-secondary renewal recommendation regarding the Center for Cartoon Studies. Tom, I'll pass it over to you.
Great. And I will, I'll cover a lot of ground and then see Jenna and Lyle and Cassandra can chime in. And I think I saw the representatives from the Center of Cartoon Studies that are also on the call. But just a reminder that this comes from Title 16, Section 176. And in our rules, it's Rules 2240 through 43. In those, those rules, we can, we can approve or we can grant a certificate of approval for credit-bearing courses and then also a certificate of degree granting authority. And the recommendation today is going to be to grant both of those or renew both of those for the Center of Cartoon Studies. Remember that in this case, there's not necessarily any public money flowing. This is more a case of consumer protection to make sure that the products that they're delivering to Vermont consumers are legit. As part of this process, the agency contracts with the Vermont Higher Education Council and they receive a self-study, they do a site visit, and then they report on what they have read and have seen and heard. The council did have a one-day visit in November, November 16th, and there was lots of conversations before and after, and there is also the self-study. A little bit about the Center for Cartoon Studies before I get into the results of the report. They serve 30 students, plus or minus. They have four full-time faculty, as well as a number of part-time adjunct and visiting faculty. They are in White River Junction, Vermont, and actually a key member of that community. They're very well-integrated in that community. They offer credits for workshops and courses, a one- and two-year certificate in cartooning, as well as a two-year Master of Fine Arts. Their tuition is $27,000, which they recognize is steep. They are raising money for more scholarships. They do have a small endowment. The report from the council highlighted a clear articulation of their unique purpose and goals, their creative and entrepreneurial culture, and that they have become a national center for excellence in cartooning, storytelling, and graphic art. Some of the strengths in the report, which I know you had, you have read, Michelle Ollie has been there for a long time, providing excellent leadership. But the leadership style of the center is very collaborative. They described it as all hands-on-deck labor of love. So with a very small staff and a collaborative leadership model, everybody is involved. It's a rigorous and supportive curriculum and culture, student-centered, with robust feedback through a number of channels for review of quality of performance and program. They have a very high retention rate, 95% of their students return. They were excellent in navigating COVID and really dedicated to the mental health of their students, continue to monitor that. They have a strong alumni support network, which they're counting on not only for job placement, but also for fundraising. They have a strong balance sheet. I mentioned their integration in the community. They are looking to improve their facilities, moving out of Department Store buildings and into the Telegraph Building in White River Junction. It will require elevators. They've raised over half the money for that move and are optimistic about raising the rest of it. Some of the concerns, one is something that we hear all over Vermont in all sorts of industries, but a housing crunch. They have a real hard time finding housing for students who are coming to go to school there, as well as, they have long-term faculty, but to have visiting faculty to find housing is also hard. They are looking for external resources for scholarships and capital projects, like those elevators, because they are primarily tuition-driven as far as their revenue sources. Because of the long-term, long-term employees and leadership staff, they are looking at succession planning, recognizing when those employees leave, a lot of institutional history will leave with it. So I will, those are the highlights from my notes from our meeting with the school. I don't know if Lyle or Jenna, you want to add? Lyle's not here. So Jenna, if you wanted to add anything, or if Cassandra's on the call, anything she would like to add.
I don't have anything else to add. Tom, I'm looking through my notes. I think you just, you hit my highlights. Yep.
Having trouble connecting.
Oh.
So maybe we'll open it up for questions. I know we have members, representatives from the school, they're on the call as well.
I really appreciated reading the report. I thought it was comprehensive and just, you know, kudos to the school for having such a well-thought-out and, you know, integrated program. As I was reading this, I was thinking that when my husband retires someday, I think he's probably going to want to do this, because it just, it sounds like a really fun thing to be doing and I'm happy that it's in Vermont.
And I'll just say, we've had students from St. John'sbury who've gone there to attend school and excellent, universally excellent experience though.
Any other comments, board members?
But the presentation is all clear, but I do not have any questions at the moment. Thank you.
Well, I guess my one question is, I'm wondering, because I know COVID, you know, posed some difficulties, and are the numbers down compared to pre-COVID? Are the numbers up or?
I guess that's a, maybe could ask Michelle to chime in on that, but my understanding is the numbers are back to where they, where they were. But Michelle, do you want to answer that?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. That's a good question. The numbers are back to where they were pre-COVID. COVID certainly had its toll on staff, faculty, and the community, but we're definitely rebounding and expanding our workshops. So I feel we're on a great trajectory right now for the coming years.
Thank you.
One more thing that stuck out to me was that Michelle had mentioned that numerous graduates, alumni settle permanently in the White River Junction area, which has led to the revitalization and a real arts culture building in White River. So I thought that was pretty impressive.
Well, there are two other that I think are fun facts. Their library is named after Charles Schultz.
Yeah.
And so have that kind of national reach. And then their admissions, their students for their master's program, if they have any bachelor's degree in any field with a passion for storytelling and potential as a graphic artist, which to your point, I, it sounds, it sounds like a great place to go to school.
They never rule any admissions, so visit cartoonstudies.org. I do want to, I do just want to point out one fact. We also produce several graphic novels and comics that are circulating throughout the state and used to help students understand democracy and how Vermont works. So projects like this are a continuum for the school and a great opportunity for both education of the student to be able to work on something that's professionally published, and then the distribution and of course, integration within curriculum.
Thank you.
Ready for a motion?
I think so.
The, the visiting team from the, from the council wanted to give them a longer period than five years, but all we can do is five years. So I'll, I move that the State Board of Education approve the secretary's recommended action that we renew the Center for Cartoon Studies Certificate of Degree Granting Authority to offer an MFA, a Master of Fine Arts, and renew the Certificate of Approval to permit the Center for Cartoon Studies to offer credit-bearing courses leading to a certificate in cartooning for a period of five years commencing on May 15th, 2024, and ending May 31st, 2029.
All right. Is there a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Kim. Any further discussion?
So moved.
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I believe it's unanimous. All right. Well, I guess I don't know if Alia's on the line or not. So any opposition, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion has been approved. Thank you. All right. And thank you, Michelle and your team, and good luck, and we'll see you in five years.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, so now the next on our agenda is a status update on the technical assistant reviews of independent schools. So I see that we have Emily with us. Hi, Emily. And is Josh with us as well?
Hi.
Okay, just Emily. So just to sort of set the table on this one, this agenda item grows out of the last round of updates to Rule Series 2200 that became effective last year. Earlier in the year, the agency sent a technical assistant, a technical assistance review to all approved independent schools in Vermont, requesting that they complete the form and submit a variety of documents to substantiate their compliance with the rules. So you have a blank version of the review form that has been sent to all approved independent schools in the agenda packet. And Emily, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. It's a great setup, Jennifer. I appreciate it. So I have just three quick slides to guide discussion.
Yeah, we're having trouble hearing you. I don't know if it's possible to turn the volume up.
Not like that.
Oh.
If I could speak up, Emily.
I think your microphone is not muted, and if it would be muted, that would help a lot.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I think there's someone on the call who, if they would mute their microphone, it would help with feedback.
Okay.
That would be this is her, my illness. Are you seeing this? No. So just have to make sure we unmute before I-
Okay, are you seeing my slides?
Yes, but. Suzanne, can you unmute and just let her know we can see her, but we have to mute to be able to hear her?
I'll message her.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, cancel.
Yes, we can, we can. Thank you, okay. So we are shorthand-ing this project, the ISTA, so the Approved Independent School Technical Just to give you the background that Jennifer alluded to a moment ago, this is the second phase of independent school compliance check that has been underway this school year. So going back to last fall, the beginning of the school year, the agency collected a set of assurances that were geared toward the new 2200 rules that had become effective on July 1. And the form of that data collection was a set of assurances based on the text of the rule. We were, the goal of that project was to ascertain the intention of the group of currently approved schools about who was moving forward and complying with the new rules and retaining the ability to receive public tuition versus schools that were not moving forward and would revert to a different status, either recognized or approved independent school ineligible to receive public funding. So on review of the results we received from the fall collection, the agency determined that we should go beyond assurances and collect some evidence of compliance and provide technical assistance on the rule, particularly the special education rules. So this began what we're calling ISTA. So in February, the agency completed and sent out the ISTA form and instructions for the form in terms of who needed to complete it and gave all independent schools a due date of March 18th. The form was in your packet today. I wanted to call out a few of the elements of the form so that you can see how the agency is structuring these compliance activities and to highlight for you that the new independent school application for all renewals will look similar to this form. This is the direction that we're moving with the little forms. So we have the basic information about the school, its accreditation status, and then we get into the areas where you're actually collecting that evidence. So we required all schools to upload their enrollment policy, a copy of their student-facing application, or the website where that information was located, and then a series of checks for these state law safety compliance elements. So we have records checks, HHB policies, discipline plan, Rule 4500 compliance, immunizations. You can see here, these are the elements that now will be listed in your rule and have been scattered throughout Title 16. We found this to be a really useful assurance for the agency, but also check for the school, that this- but also check for the school that this was a refresher of all of the elements that are always required, making sure that they're front of mind. Again, professional staff qualifications, school branding, which is one of the newer requirements, a school record retention policy, again, is one that I call out as one of the newer Rule 2200 requirements. And then the elements of Rule 2229, which is where we begin the special education-related and enrollment-related requirements. So again, we have an upload for that enrollment policy, a set of staffing assurances. I call this one to your attention. This is where the agency has done a little interpretation of the rule in terms of concretely what is it that a school must do to be compliant? And it's that the school must either employ or contract with a special educator or provide the agency records of at least one member of the staff who have completed very prescriptive training offered by the agency. That's this module series for provisional special education license. Then we have a set of assurances related to the special education delivery and cooperation requirements. But I'll call your attention to the evidence that's required. We gave the technical assistance here of what the rule requires in more plain language than the rule, and then required affirmative descriptions of the, I would call them, compliance activities. What is the school doing? They needed to show that there is a system in place, a plan in place for each of these elements. So I'll go back to my slide deck. So that was the ISTA form. And again, just to remind you, that had a due date in March. Because of school vacation, the agency felt it was appropriate to grant several extension requests, so that the due date ended up being March 27. Then it began an internal process at the agency with staff conducting an initial review for completeness and then a secondary review for adequacy of all those, you know, the evidence, those materials, policies that were submitted. That detailed review is ongoing, but it is at a stage where we have looked at everything. We are wrapping up summaries of our findings from this process. So where are we today? Today, we know several things. The process is not complete, but we do have a few preliminary conclusions. So first is that three schools communicated that they were opting out of the new requirements related to eligibility for public tuition and requested to change their status so that they're not accepting public tuition. Those schools haven't yet communicated whether they will fill out the recognized school registration or whether they'll retain that middle status of approved but ineligible for public education. Two schools did not communicate back to the agency with a completed ISTA form. We called and called and called and still never heard from them. So we have made the decision that it is now too late. We did not receive satisfactory documentation from two schools. And these two schools will be subject to a recommendation for either non-renewal or revocation of the approved status. So that will be coming back to the board, but is not up for action today. And then 51 schools, which is everybody else in that approved independent school category, which does not include therapeutic independent schools, will receive additional technical assistance around two. I said common, but it's more accurate to say universal implementation problems within two domains. So everybody missed the mark by a little, not by a lot. This is a yellow light concern, not a red light concern, on record retention and disposition elements of that required policy, which is a newer requirement, and on elements of the admissions policy related to when it's appropriate to collect information about a student's eligibility for special education. So I know this is a concern of the board. I can say all the policies we reviewed are compliant in that they assure nondiscriminatory admissions within, you know, legal confines. But we see a common hiccup where maybe with the best of intention, a school is going to know a student's special education status before they've been accepted for enrollment. And that's not in the spirit of the rule as we interpret it. That admissions process should be blind to special education need until the student has been accepted for a moment and it's time to talk about the how of enrolling that student and providing their services in partnership with their LEA. So that's, in all fairness, pretty complicated, pretty nuanced, and is a requirement that's one-year-old. And so in fairness, since everybody slightly missed the mark, we're going to keep the ISTA process open, provide technical assistance, interactive sessions to get assistance with questions, and of course, reserve the right to make recommendations if we don't see willingness to, you know, bring those policies into line with what we think is the appropriate best practice. So ISTA remains open while we provide that technical assistance and see how it is received. So those are my slides. What questions do you have for me?
Questions?
I think I may have one regarding the waiting phase of incoming students or incoming post-students.
Michelle, it made me think of what is the policy if a student is actually transferring from a school with already an IEP status from their school of origin? What would the difference be? Oh, we lost you. Sorry.
Oh, it's just because I was muted. No big deal. So yeah, that question is right to the heart of the procedures that I think need to be included in this policy to ensure that a student enrolling gets the same admissions chance regardless of if they've ever had an IEP or not. And in all fairness, there's no need, just at that acceptance for admission or acceptance for enrollment stage, for the people to know that the student ever had an IEP, right? The questions are, does the student meet other requirements for enrollment? Is there space for enrollment? Students should be eligible for home on an equal basis with everyone else? And then we move to the question of, okay, what services can the student receive? And I, in the past.
Thank you. Thank you, Emily.
Other questions? Kim?
I appreciated the detail of the form. And I'm curious about the timing for the technical assistance. I'm thinking about families and independent schools and their decisions. And also curious, not as much to the impact for the three that are opting out because they are not going to be eligible for public tuition, but I'm wondering at what point the determination on sort of their category will happen? So the lingering things, what do you see as the timeline for those things?
So, Kim, clarify for me. Are you talking about the two schools reference to my slide or the 51?
The 51, like the entirety of wrapping it up for decisions for families and the independent schools, and the LAAs for that matter.
Yeah. So an important element of our internal process was to prioritize those red light issues, if any, in early April so that we could send up the flag then and say, hey, we're worried we're going to have a problem. We need to take quicker action. We were able to determine in April in our review that we did not have any noncompliance that was going to lead the agency to need to recommend someone lose their status. So once we cleared that hurdle, now where we're at are improvements that we need to see, but that we don't expect to make the difference in those enrollment decisions on the part of family or eligibility on the part of the school.
Thank you. I have another question, if that's okay. So the, I'm just curious and I'm wondering, one of the things they could check was that they have taken the modules for provisional license. And I'm wondering, what is the duration of time that a provisional license is effective? And does that comply with requirements for delivering an IEP with a qualified person?
Right. So this was, then we had to look at carefully in terms of the rule requirement and the options that that leaves or the flexibilities that that leaves for complying with that rule requirement. So the rule doesn't require any school to have a licensed special education teacher, but that is an option. And knowing that we have a shortage of special educators in this state, it didn't seem practicable with the agency to interpret the rule, which doesn't say that explicitly as, oh, yes, this is definitely a requirement. You've got to have somebody with a license. So rather than give it that licensure route, the reason we're mentioning that module is it already exists. It's widely accepted as a good baseline professional development around special education issues. And we see it as a good objective marker of someone who, although they don't have a license, has that background in special education that will serve.
And so...
So they're not actually getting, necessarily being granted, a provisional license. This module is one element of the step to a provisional license for someone who is obtaining it.
So in that situation, a person who's done a training module would be in lieu of contracting with a special educator or having a licensed special educator?
Correct.
And I don't know special ed law well enough to know if that passes muster? I don't, I'm looking at Tammy or...
Look at me. I know the intention of that question. So the federal special education requirements are stated in terms of a student entitlement and IEP compliance. So the reg, that student has to have the professional who is mandated in their IEP. You might have a mismatch, right? There's so much flexibility in the rule for different fact patterns to come up. My mind jumps to a fact pattern there. You might have independent school who has taken that route, someone who has received that training. And you might have student who has an IEP with a very specific licensed professional service. That's going to be a mismatch where the independent school and the LEA will have to come up with another method to provide that service to that student in that school, something above and beyond just the student attending the school. So tuition services or another contractor or something.
If it's on the IEP, it's not, it should not be the case that the IEP should be modified for the resources at an independent school. But that is what she just said.
No, so they would have to contract to get that specialized service?
Or modify, or modify the IEP.
No, they would not modify.
Not modify the IEP.
But I...
This is a change, though, right?
Yeah.
And this is a significant change than having a licensed special educator.
But that was never a requirement.
For therapeutic, well, for therapeutic schools it was.
So that's still, that's still, that's still in play here. So this is, this is still in play. It's not, the rule still says that the school and the LEA look at the IEP and they decide what professionals are required by the IEP. And that's still the case, depending on who's going to supply it. The provisional licenses, that is, I don't think it's a replacement for that.
It was on the form, I think, though, Tom. That's exactly why I'm asking, because it appears as though they could indicate one of two things. They'll send somebody through a training module. So perhaps a paraeducator, we just had a long conversation about shortage and pathways to licensure for paraeducators. And I didn't hear anything mentioned about the opportunity to have a module be in, instead of those para-professionals or the shortage in the special ed field being met by having taken a module of the AOE.
Okay. Is there a prerequisite that a person has to have before they take the module?
No.
Okay. So you, so schools could hire somebody without any advanced degree? They take the module and then they become the special educator on the record providing the service because they've passed the module?
Not on its own, Jenna, because there's an underlying always simply that all educators in an independent school have to be qualified by training and experience. And so just, I would not be qualified by training or experience, even if I took the module.
So is a degree in the content, I'm just trying to understand. A degree in the content area that you teach is what it, right? Like, okay.
For a special educator, it's a little, I'm being squishy on this because there's multiple options for what the content area basis would be. Yeah.
Squishy's right.
The rule is flexible.
And doesn't the rule give options about, as you mentioned, once the student is accepted and now look at the IEP? Now it's a conversation with the LEA and the school about how that IEP is implemented, like who, how this serves us. So this, but the provisional license wasn't in the rule. It was just something that was, I guess, it was something that the, you thought would be a good thing to have? Or where did that come from?
That came from the rule not explicitly stating what, an objective criteria to know that the person is qualified. And so the agency using our judgment to say, this training is an objective measure that we offer. And so we know it is of quality. And a person who takes it, in the agency's interpretation, will have the background to serve that function. Remember, per Tammy's question, they won't automatically be in the clear to offer everything on the IEP. This is a threshold question about whether the school, as it exists before it enrolls any actual student, is eligible for public funding.
So to follow up, again, if that's okay. Somebody else has another follow-up. So as we go down the form, so first, it's an option to assure the school that one of two things, employing or contracting with a licensed special educator or providing records of one staff member completing the required module series for provisional special ed license. To a lay set of ears, that suggests taking the module gives you a provisional license. I'm hearing you say that's not true. But further down the form, it says staffing assurance, where they're going to need to check a box that says, I assure employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special education services. Those two options seem inconsistent with one another. The second being what we expected, and I think what the rule says, the second box that allows a training module to suffice up at the top under 22, 29.2, seems insufficient. And/or, I guess, if the field, I don't, I don't understand how that meets the requirement.
So, there are two different points in time when these requirements are relevant. So, the standing requirement at all times is up above, either employing with or contracting with a licensed special educator or providing the records of one person who took a specific module. That's whether you enroll any students who receive special education services or not. That's all the time. Then, the lower down requirement is related to special education services that are needed as a result of the enrollment of one or more students with IEP services that they're entitled to.
And...
So, first, since the intent of the first sort of having someone go through the provisional module is to develop, is that, is the intent there to demonstrate that they have the capacity to serve? And then, when a student is accepted, then the negotiation would be who actually provides the services on the IEP? I, I, I'm just trying to figure out, like, why, why do we have, why is that there in the first? Is that just supposed to be demonstration that they have some knowledge and capacity but that has no bearing on an individual's IEP? Is that, I'm just trying to make sense of this.
I think that's a perfect way to put it. I think you said capacity, I said standing capacity. And then, the second is related to the actual delivery of services once they're called upon, right? You, you may have a student who requires additional services and you may not. That's going to be up to the choices of students and families.
So, may I just ask a follow-up question? Sorry. So, here's, here's where I think, here's where I think people are struggling. It's if we say that we have capacity to serve and it's based on someone saying there's, someone went through the provisional license, right? That's a signal that we are able to serve students with disabilities for their IEP. But that person is not a licensed special educator and doesn't even have a provisional license. All they're doing is completing this provisional license training, right? Module, right? It's not even licensed. So, then we have Tammy who comes to school there with her IEP who needs a licensed special educator or maybe the IEP from the LEA isn't even specific and says that I need a licensed special educator, I need these special education and services. My concern is that somehow these two things are going to get conflated, that we have a situation where a school's demonstrating capacity and then they're going to, then when the student shows up, they're going to try to apply that capacity to a particular student's IEP. And that person is less qualified, right? Because they're not licensed in any way, right? They've just done this module. They're less qualified than a licensed special educator that that student, to which that student likely would have access to in a different, in a public school.
But this is saying on 2229.3C that they have to assure employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure. So, once you get to an actual student who needs the services, then if I'm reading this correctly, and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, that once you get to an actual student needing the services, then you need to have a licensed educator. I guess my question is, is it clear to schools that these are two different points in time that these two questions are seeking information and assurances on? Because I guess it wasn't clear to the board.
Well, you're, you're thinking in two roles at the same time and that is confusing. So, one role is the agency has a standing requirement for, related to status. There are other rules which are directed to the actions of the school and the LEA of the student that speak to, they meet, they determine whether the school is sitting there with its standing capacity can serve the student or not. And in the case where they cannot, your rules, procedure for them to essentially negotiate how to partner to deliver those services. And when, when all those steps are exhausted, the onus remains on the student's LEA.
Exactly.
To provide services. So, I do, I do think, Tammy, to your point, the person who works at the independent school could be confused about that would be mismatched. They might not identify it as mismatched, but the LEA has to be there and they know what is required, right? So, I do think that the rules as they exist require collaboration and negotiation and maybe there's a better way to write this process. But I'm going to remind you, the form is a recitation of the State Board's rules as they stood and require evidence and assurance.
No, I agree with you. I'm just trying to sort of pull the string on like what this looks like in practice. And what I wouldn't want to have happen is an independent school reads this, goes through this process and thinks, oh, I have a person, right, who did this provisional thing. I have, I have my person uncovered on this and now we have a situation where Tammy shows up and there's an IEP and now we're having this really difficult negotiation with an LEA, which puts the parent and the child and the LEA and the independent school in a tricky position because that person may not be qualified. I just want, I'm just, you see what I mean? I'm just worried that, and I know these are the rules, right? And the form makes sense in terms of the rules, but I can see where that could be a point of confusion particularly for independent schools who have not been part or subject to special education roles in the past, right?
Emily, could you expand on the technical assistance that's being provided in this specific area to promote clarity around these questions?
You'll be happy to hear that I am not the only person providing technical assistance and our whole special education team are responsible for, one, answering these questions as they come up and, two, generating broadly applicable guidance to be a pattern of confusion. So, Tammy, we might identify that as a pattern out in the world. You're pretty smart on this stuff, so I expect if you see a problem, fit in. But we, you know, these are new rules, we've created a new system and so our technical assistance is reactive. I mean, I know that's not, that's not ideal, but we are nimble to the problems that exist and giving them any guidance when they can roll out the rules.
Kim? So, I'm reading directly from the 2200 series and I know we moved some things around, so I can't be sure what it was, but what I'm reading is, "An independent school approved for public tuition shall demonstrate the ability to serve students with disabilities by employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special education services." They are not required to demonstrate that it has the resources to provide every type of special ed service in order to be approved or retain approval to receive public tuition. And then, it goes on to talk about therapeutic schools. And then, "Within the assurances shall demonstrate," and this definitely hasn't changed, "that it has the ability to serve all students with disabilities by..." And then, C says, "Employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special ed services." So, I don't see anywhere where the second choice is enabled through either statute or rule. I'm concerned.
Yeah. You did read from the new version of the rules.
Let me see if I can find the last one. How does the last one differ? Does it offer that option, Emily?
So, the assurances is, "Employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special education services." Two things. One, there are not enough special education staff who have licensure in the state to, who work at all these schools. And two, it's not a requirement to be in an independent school to have any licensed staff. So, the requirement to be, to be staff in an independent school in the rules is qualified by training or experience. But then, there's the point about some special education services matches, the students do require a license. So, this is the agency's practical rule that can work and we might change our form in the future, but this is our interpretation of what will work.
I think maybe missing here though is, is that the provision, right? So, this provisional training, right? In the rule, they're supposed to demonstrate that they have the ability to contract with, right? So, one thing to say that I've had somebody go through provisional training, it's another thing to have sort of the relationships set, right? Like, I think the expectation, the spirit of the rule is that these schools are ready and willing to serve students with disabilities. And so, they have relationships, they have plans for how they're going to do this. And I'm, again, I'm concerned that just having someone go through the provisional licensure, no, they're not required to be licensed, you're right. But I worry that that's going to somehow supplant the, what independent schools do in terms of going out and building those relationships. It should not be the case that the LEA shows up at their door and this should be starting from ground zero. That is not the intent of the rule, right? They're supposed to have these relationships and be ready and willing to do that. And I don't see anything in this document that signals to us that they've gone through that thought process of, how am I going to find a licensed special educator? Especially, yeah, we're really short on special educators. You can't even contract with them in some parts of the state.
So, I'm wondering too, like, because this is a theoretical conversation that we're having, I'm wondering as a practical matter, how many schools actually checked the second box? And only the second box? Like, they didn't check the first box, they only checked the second box? And would it be worth it to have follow-up conversations with those schools on that point to sort of avoid the potential scenario of, you know, Tammy showing up needing an IEP and the school thinking that they're ready to go?
Yeah. So, this is, so the follow activity was a first cut of assurances. The Istanbul form represents a second cut, assurances plus objective evidence that either you have it or you don't. A full independent school renewal report including a site visit is the true test of compliance. And this is not represented to be equivalent to that full view and recommendation that includes a site visit. And the questions that you all are asking, I think, are interfeited to the interview and the onsite documents check, procedures check that we do on the site visit.
Could bring back some additional information too on what is involved in that independent school review visit in terms of evaluating special education compliance?
Right.
I know Jenna's also, and then Kim.
I just, but Emily didn't answer your question.
I don't know, I mean, I'm not expecting Emily to have an answer to that.
I didn't know if you had like a spreadsheet and you know how many of the 51 checked the providing record of at least one member completing the required module.
I have access to records that would allow me to answer that question, but I'm not answering it right now because I haven't done that counting.
Okay. No, thank you. I think that that's a, sort of a meaningful question, but I have a question after or an observation after Jenna.
My, my question is around the module provisional. Does it have the same terms as a regular provisional in terms of, it's not a path to licensure, so someone can just, once you have a provisional from the module completion, is it, is it dated or does someone have to renew it?
It was a little jumbled. So, a few things. One, and Jenna can know this better than I do, to get a provisional, you have to show minimum education and experience requirements and undergo a mentorship with a licensed educator and in special education, you have to take this module, right? So, we're just pulling out this module as a good source of vetted professional development that contains the essential information. The person who takes it might also be seeking a provisional and they might not, but the two are not tied together in any way.
Well, yes. And as a follow-up, I mean, you mentioned the capacity of special educators. I mean, we're a statewide issue. So, would this not be an option for public schools who are also struggling trying to find special educators?
I, I think it depends on the person, whether the same person in an independent school or public school might be able to get the provisional. But in the independent school, I don't know whether they're also electing to get to the provisional. That's their, that's, I don't know that. It's not required.
I pulled up the information on provisional licensure for partially that question but to better understand it. For offering it as an option, we're describing it as required module series for provisional special education license. Even that language leads one to believe, take the module and you've got a provisional license. It was why I asked, because I'm not an educator, so I didn't know how long provisional license is left for. But in pulling that up, it says, "Who's eligible for a temporary special ed license? An applicant must meet all of the following requirements: a minimum of a bachelor's degree, a passing score on a praxis assessment for special ed within 120 days of issuance of the provisional license, an assigned mentor who has agreed to participate in an AOE mentoring training, completion of an AOE identified introductory series of special education modules, admittance to an approved pathway to special ed licensure." And so, that being one of only five requirements and to Jenna's question earlier, it might be that someone doesn't even have an advanced degree and completes the online training and that would suffice to be in lieu of employing or contracting with a licensed special educator, which I don't think in any way meets the spirit of either 173 or the 2200 series rules. So, I, I remain concerned of the implication and knowing, as we've heard of the shortage, the inability for our public schools to even create reasonable pathways for paraeducators who may very well have advanced degrees but, but simply not have the, the right degree to be certified as special educators in that environment, so.
That's true. That's true of the law.
Yeah, it is. I think just one other, I'm sorry.
All right.
I was just going to say, one other thing I think we just need to name in all of this and Emily, I think you brought it up and made a really good point. I mean, the responsibility is on the LEA, right? The LEA is responsible for the IEP. But what I also wanted to say is that to the extent this is murky, we're putting more burden on the LEAs in these situations, right? Because now they're going to have to negotiate with an independent school that may not actually be very qualified to serve a student with a disability, right? They may not actually have people, they may not have the ability to contract very well. And we've just sort of put more burden back on them. And we've heard from the LEAs around the state through the 173 Committee, Meg Troy, other people have testified with the State Board, that the LEAs have real challenges with certain independent schools, not all independent schools, certain independent schools in overseeing the implementation of the IEPs. And so, I just want to make sure that we're not setting up a situation here or a new set of sort of ground rules that make that challenging situation even more challenging for LEAs and trying to do their job. And I know that's your goal too, but I think we just also need to keep our eye on that ball in this conversation because that's hard. It's a hard negotiation, it's a hard thing to do already and we've heard that there's challenges in the field in doing it well already. So, if, to the extent that we can clarify these things through your review process so that everybody's clear on what the requirements are and that there's not a misunderstanding about provisional or not provisional, independent schools that are approved are clear about their responsibilities for needing to find qualified staff and that this doesn't all blow back on LEAs, I think that's really important in this process.
I think all of those points are really important and I'm showing you a form that is tailored to the rules that the State Board has adopted and that's not the end of the story of implementation at all. It's one stage in the process. So, yeah, those are all important points.
Tom?
Yeah, I just want to raise something that was raised really early in this process that we've talked about, but I just want to point it out, there's a shortage of special educators. And by making these rules, we've now expanded this, the scope or the range of places where those special educators will need to work. And we decided, and rightly decided, that we're not requiring all independent schools to hire a special educator. The LEAs have the special educators. When the student moves out of that, that... When the student moves out of that, that LEA into, or out of that school, that placement, into the independent school, that's going to put stress on the system.
It is.
We knew it from the beginning, we said it from the beginning. It's going to put stress on that system. And Emily, I just, this is just a clarifying question. Is that provisional license checkbox, the way that the agency has chosen to say, "The school has somebody with training in special education, so they at least know the landscape, even if they're not implementing an IEP or special education services," was that the Because that wasn't, we didn't think about that when we made the rules, but I wonder if that was the intent?
I think, yes, in that it's the intent for that to represent the school's standing ability. Imagine that the school is empty, there's no students that need any services. That's the standing ability requirement. That's not the end of the line for all the requirements they'll have to meet upon the enrollment of students who have special education needs. You also, this is not getting much attention in our discussion, but you also have a set of assurances in your rule that are represented in the form that requires the school to affirm that personnel at the school understand an enumerated set of special education concepts. So in the rule, there's our first, a provision of free and appropriate public education. Second, understanding of the least restrictive environment. Third, the characteristics and educational needs associated with categories of disability. And last, procedural safeguards in IDEA. So those are also standalone assurances in the form that folks had to attest that they have staff who have that knowledge, which is separate and apart from a person who took that module.
Still finding, Emily, the two to be in conflict with one another, 2229.2, and the assurance of 2229.3C, to create a conflict. I don't know how, if you've checked box two up top, you can, this isn't based on an individual student's IEP, this is, I put somebody through the training module, and now I'm going to say yes, that I'm assuring I'm employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special ed services? Like, they're in conflict with one another. It doesn't seem you can check box two and then go down there and check the other one.
Well, the staff at the agency wrote this form this way, so we don't agree with you, I'm sorry. And we didn't have massive misunderstanding when folks filled out the form. We didn't have to clarify the question. It seems that, to practitioners, it makes sense.
I think some of the questions are really related to implementation, right? And so as we do the follow-up conversation around special ed, and council returns, and our staff, we could also enumerate, like, what this actually looks like in application for the independent schools, to help answer some of these questions.
Well, and I think, too, this conversation has been really helpful, you know, maybe for the agency to hear the board's concerns. I think we're all on the same page. I think we all want the same outcome here. Like, we want schools to comply with the rules, to be ready, willing, and able to accept students regardless of their special needs, and to be able to provide, you know, have a plan to be able to provide for special education services should a student need them. We want the school to be able to recognize when a student, you know, needs special education services. And we want the services that are provided to be, you know, rigorous and provided by someone who's qualified to provide them. So I think if we can all agree on that as, this is the goal that we're all working for, I think, you know, if, if we can get information back from the agency that basically assures, you know, the public, the board, that that goal has been achieved, then, I mean, obviously we are deferring to you to be able to, to perform this work and then come back to us.
I, I will, I will maintain that I think this creates an inherent conflict, that one of the five requirements for provisional licenses is being referenced here as an acceptable solution for receiving public tuition because you're capable and able to provide the provisions of special ed services.
But we're, we're having a theoretical conversation, and I think once we have actual data.
To know, like, how many chose box two, and then were able to say they employ staff with licensure? Like, they did box two and then they did, "I assure that I'm employing contracting staff." Like, is that data you can bring back to us or send us before the next meeting? Is it available?
I, I have information that the form collected. I don't think I completely understood how you wanted that communicated back to you, but we can report out that counts of the chose, the answers that were chosen where there were options on a question.
And I think what we're looking for is assurance that if there's a school that only checked the second box, that that school is nevertheless able, in fact, to provide special education services to students by people who are qualified to provide those services. At the end of the day, I mean, I think that's what we're all looking for.
Yes, the information that you all have, what student population actually present and enrolled at that school. I can't tell you if they have the correct, that in the abstract.
I think it's a distinction between the assurances versus the site review.
Well, I was just going to say to your point, I think Emily made a good point earlier. It might be helpful, Emily, if you could share with us the questions or sort of boxes that are going to be filled out as a part of the site review? Because that's, right? Because that's where you're going to unpack and get the rich description around these things. So maybe along with the questions, the items, let's take a look at these questions that are asking, because you think everybody's got some good ideas around that, and that might be helpful. And then we can make sure that when you're doing those site reviews, that the kind of information that are generating, you know, sort of generating some of these questions is getting collected, and might be a good next step.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that one, Tammy? Like, these site reviews are just happening on, on independent school renewal, right? So we've got however many cycles of determining whether or not they're eligible to receive public tuition before they may potentially have a renewal will be the point at which they have the site visit questions you're talking about. So I renew my concern that we are expecting something less than what is outlined in rule or even requirements as a substitute for employing or contracting with licensed special educators. Because they could be licensing back to, or employing or contracting with the LEA, couldn't they?
They could.
Right. So, so I'm not quite sure why this out is sufficient, and it is, I will remain, I stand strongly against it.
Kim, is it, is it an out? I mean, I-
And let me just acknowledge, I see that Richard has his hand raised.
Yeah, okay. I'm just going to say, I'm not sure that, what I'm understanding is this isn't an out yet. When I understand that this is a data gathering tool at this point. But I think you raise a good point, which is, if we're not going to do site visits at these schools for a number of years, I'm wondering that, and this is a new requirement, one that we're concerned about, I'm wondering if we need to include these questions in our technical assistance or part of that review, or part of this conversation we're having with them? Because I think it would be hard for the agency to really know that, or have any kind of assurance that this is in fact there, if we're going to wait five years to reapprove them, right?
And I just think we are allowing a choice of taking a training module without any other requirements implying provisional special ed license, which isn't, I don't think, what you're describing as intended. But then below, they're going to assure that they're employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special ed services. And so I, I don't see how those two things reconcile.
So maybe this is, and Emily, you got to tell me if I get this right. The first pair requires some kind of outlay of money, even if there's no student receiving special services. The, unless you say that contracting with a special educator can be something that's simply on paper with no exchange of money, simply an agreement that should a student show up, we'll contract with you, LEA, to, to provide those services. The second area, where there's only one box, is when there's actually a student that has an IEP that requires a special educator, that they will have contracted or employed a special educator. But if simply signing an agreement with a special educator to provide those services is enough, then I, I can see your point, that the provisional license doesn't provide anything really much more than that, except for somebody on site who actually has had some training in special education.
But only one of the four requirements.
Right, but some, if you take it away, then all you have is the possibility that, or the requirement that they have some kind of agreement with a special educator, is not necessarily anybody in the school, whereas this would be that option.
But I think I see it differently, Tom, because that allows you to not have a contract. So when the student does show up, you don't have an arrangement for serving that student. And you can't know it until the student's there. So we need some assurance that if public tuition is flowing to a school that is not discriminating based on accepting students who may have a need for special services, and that is the condition that's required, there should be some expectation, as there is, and there's really, I'm not seeing that 2229.3 assurances is saying, "Once someone gets there, you have to do this." It says, "The approved independent school shall demonstrate that it has the ability to serve all students with disabilities by..." And then it goes on in C, it gives the other things that are in the section above this. And then it, C very specifically says, "Employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special education services." So this other "take a module" thing is not anticipated or offered anywhere in the old regulation or rules. The new version, which I think is going before LCAR within the month, is going to have clarifying language that says it right at the top of 2229.2, that says exactly the same thing. "Demonstrate the ability to serve students by employing, contracting staff, or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special ed services." So that's the new rules, bring that up to the top and leave it in 2229.3. So, so there's, there was nothing before in the rules that were old as of, you know, two years ago, or however long ago we worked on them last, that created a condition that would be met by taking a training module. And, and there's nothing that changed at all in 2229.3 in that C. So I remain concerned, and I think the concern will be amplified if we find out we've got a bunch of schools using that option, and then somehow, how are they interpreting saying yes to 2229.3? So I think that'll be really important information, because this is foundational for who will be expecting to receive tuition for next year. For families and independent schools, knowing what their enrolled students can expect and their families can expect.
Richard, as we engage kind of this broader conversation, if we talk also about the requirements for the LEA under the IDEA monitoring that is annual, that might help, I think, to identify how those needs are being met for each individual student. So, but we don't have the team on here to-
Well, I mean, I, I think that's true, right? The LEA is never, I mean, they always hold responsibility. They're delegating some of that, but they're always responsible, some accountability. I, I think what I'm hearing where things are getting sticky is, we have a rule that says, "To be approved, you need to have capacity to serve students with disabilities." And it feels very squishy to, I think, a bunch of us in this conversation, that, about how it is that we're determining whether or not an independent school has the capacity to do that. And the perception may be, based on this form, and, and it could be on the part of the independent school, it seems to be, some confusion in this group, that simply checking the box and having an individual take this provisional training somehow meets that requirement. So I think that's issue number one. And then I think issue number two is, at least I am still feeling unclear about how it is we are actually determining whether or not an independent school meets the requirements of the rule of having the knowledge and capacity to do this, right? Because that box doesn't, that box doesn't tell us that, right?
Yeah, equivalency about the model training we're talking about. How is it equal or equivalent to an actual license? I think if that can be demonstrated, it can be helpful.
So, I see, I don't know if Richard still has his hand up. I want to acknowledge the fact that he's been waiting a long time, and then I have a thought as well. Rich, are you still with us?
He left the meeting.
Oh, sorry, Rich. What would be the practical effect if the agency sort of heard from the board that we're not really sure what that second box really accomplishes? And what if it were struck? And then you're just left with this requirement as an independent school that you need to be able to employ or contract with a licensed special educator? Because at the end of the day, that is what you need to be able to comply with the rule.
What would be the effect?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you took away the second box under 2229.2, and just left it only as an option for a school to assure that it employs or contracts with a licensed special educator? I mean, isn't that what we're really looking for anyway? I mean, I guess, I'm not really sure what the second box gains us. And I think there are some concerns about, you know, the potential effect of it. So, and I'm thinking out loud here, but I'm wondering, what if the second box were not an option? Like, do we lose anything?
I, you'd have to ask the independent schools, because I don't know, sitting here, their reliance on that as an option, which is an option that was communicated to them at the end of last summer, based on the wording of the rule. And what you just read me is not the language. So I think there is a difference there.
Wait, I'm sorry, we lost you. What I read to you wasn't the wording of what? Because I was reading it off of the form.
Yeah, the rule says, "Employing or contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special education services." That is not the same as a licensed special educator. Those are two different things.
I think, yeah, and I, and I agree with you, right? But I don't think that's, I don't think that's the sticking point here. I think the sticking point here is that, and what, what I think is being reflected back in this conversation, is a lack of clarity on our part and some discomfort around the fact that it's not clear to us how the agency is determining whether or not an independent school is meeting those, meeting those requirements, right? Which are, they need to develop, they need to demonstrate that they have the capacity to contract with staff, or, right? Or they could even employ a staff member, but they're not required to do that. But the rule's pretty clear, that in order to be approved, that they have to have the capacity to, right, engage in this process in a meaningful way. And that may be contracting back, it may be having their own staff, it may be having people on their staff who are qualified to sit at a table and have a conversation with an LEA. But I think the discomfort that I'm hearing is that the one checkbox doesn't feel like sufficient information for the agency or anyone else to be able to determine whether or not an independent school understands that that's a requirement and is prepared to implement beneath that requirement. That, to me, it seems like the sticking point. And I don't, I don't think it's something we can't overcome, right? Like, it just feels like this was a good first pass, to your, to your point, Emily, right? Like, it's a good first pass. But I think what needs to happen as a next step is, we need to have sort of a clear process, the questions that are going to get asked. the questions that are going to get asked, and how it is that we're going to make a decision, the agency's going to make a decision, about whether or not an independent school, before being approved, is, can meet those requirements.
And I think one of the things Emily mentioned kind of at the beginning of this is because there are new rules to be recognized as an agency, that there is additional technical assistance required, right? And that is ongoing.
Yeah.
Right? And so I think there's an opportunity for us to come back and share.
So I think technical assistance is great. And I applaud the agency for getting out in front of that. So I think that makes a lot of sense. But I still think that we have to be clear, what are the criteria that we're going to be used to determine whether or not an independent school is meeting this? Because it is part of the approval. Right? Or continued approval. And it feels pretty murky right now, right? And it's a big part of 173, and it is new. And we need to get it right, right? We need to get it right, right out of the box. Because what we do now is a legacy going forward.
Just a quick thing, Ron. Any support, I think, around that technical assistance is great and to help like small, like small independent schools operationalize something, right? Because like, they, as we know, are very small independent schools, have like very limited personnel. So let's say our English teacher is also this designated person. And then all of a sudden, we have to say, no, you have to teach English and be the special educator of license right now. There's no way. So like, we're kind of setting up very small independent schools for failure the minute a student walks in the door after they've attested that they can do this. And then no one, no one gets English. You know, there goes math today, right? Like, those things happen. And I think we just want everyone to be successful, including primarily our students, right? Kim, sorry.
And I think I am still perplexed to understand how number two became an option because it's not, it seems, I'm not sure that I see it to be consistent with 173. But also importantly, I don't see where it's enabled in the old version of the rules either. I don't see where that as a tool for meeting the requirements otherwise established in 2229.3 in the old rules creates option two. I'm not understanding where that came from, what enabled it, how's it even allowed for.
So 2229.2, "An approved independent school is not required to demonstrate it has the resources to serve every category of special education." It goes on, but you don't need me to read that. Next paragraph, "The secretary shall establish minimum standards of services for students receiving special education services in independent schools." Third element of our interpretation, 2229.3, C, "Employer contracting with staff who have the required licensure to provide special education services." That's those three, that's in combination are where the agency's interpretation comes from.
And offered that training module as adequate to do that? Because it doesn't, that doesn't meet C in 2229.3.
It meets the combination of the three elements together that I just read to you in the agency's professional judgment.
So I think we have probably scattered the depths of this argument. I think, you know, the board's interpretation is probably not in alignment with the agency's. I think that's fair to say. But I think, again, I'm going to pull it back and say, we are all on the same page for what the ultimate goal is here. And so I think, you know, the survey, the technical assistance form has been sent. The agency is in the process of completing it. And I think, you know, what this conversation makes clear is what, you know, the board is hoping to gain from this technical assistance review. And I'm assuming also that the agency is expecting to gain from the technical assistance review, as well as schools, right? And, you know, because the bottom line is, we want schools to be able to succeed in educating any student who walks through their door. We want students to be educated in an appropriate manner by whatever school they choose to attend. So I think that is kind of our common goal. And I think what we might want to do is, you know, we've had this conversation today. I think the agency kind of understands where we are. And then let you guys come back to us when you have more information to be able to assure all of us that we are, you know, working toward this common goal.
Yes.
I also know Tom has to leave. I did see Addie came on a little bit ago. So if there's no objection, I'd like to, you know, close off this agenda item today and actually maybe skip ahead to the student report, just so that Addie's not waiting. Because I think everything else is just board members. So.
We got a follow-up on the numbers and the things we asked about.
Okay. So, hi. Hi, Addie. So this, this is our student report that we, this was Agenda Item D that we've moved down on our agenda to accommodate Addie, who can be here with us, as well as Aleah, who is now joining us remotely. And I think you guys have a V-SAR update for us.
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much for being flexible with my schedule. I really appreciate it.
You too.
So we wanted to just give a general update on what's been going on. We have had a really busy year, and we're excited for the summer. But Aleah, do you want to start and talk about Advocacy Day?
Yeah, so was it two weeks ago? It's been two weeks now. We are coming up on two weeks. We held Advocacy Day at the State House in Montpelier. And we had a bunch of legislators come and speak. We had speakers, I spoke, Addie spoke. And basically, it was a way to get everyone, like all the youth around the state of Vermont, to one place to meet and create those connections with other people who are doing the work of being anti-racist and trying to make other people do the work of being anti-racist. And so it was a really nice event. We made so many connections. It was so nice to see the turnout of it. We had 100 students, maybe. We had a couple of schools there. And so it was really nice to see that this is something that people want within the state of Vermont.
Yeah, it was, it was really cool to see so many people show up. And it was kind of a good culmination of the year. So throughout the beginning, middle of the year, we had been doing the book project and the Let Me Be Great campaign. So we went to, I believe, 30 schools this past school year, either elementary schools, middle schools, or high schools to do presentations about different books for younger kids and then about like generally like microaggressions and how to be an anti-racist for older students. And that was really successful. And we got a lot of donations of books, and we sent books to a lot of schools. And so that was really cool. And a lot of students gave us feedback afterwards. And what we found is that students are really interested in learning more and have a lot of questions about what it means to do this work and what it means to be a student in Vermont doing this work and how they can help and what they can do to address this issue in their schools. And at the same time, we had a lot of students who didn't, not a lot, but some students who didn't want to recognize that racism was the thing, like white students who didn't want to recognize that racism was a big problem. And so that kind of presents that dichotomy in the schools, where like, there's a lot of people who want to make a difference and also there's a lot of just misunderstanding. So we're trying to address that and, and kind of capitalize on the, on the, like, on the energy around, around making change and being actively anti-racist. And we also did a bill this year. It did not happen. But we, our, our summer plans are to like do some listening tours around a new bill and like see what students need, and then craft a new bill with some legislators around education reform. And then also, we're working with Reverend Mark Hughes to do some summer programming. So we're hoping to like go to parks and libraries and do tabling and do events and really get out there in the community and spread our message and try to get more young people and also just community members involved in this work. So, yeah. And then in the fall, we're hoping just to continue what we're doing right now and maybe start to pay students a bit more for their work in more of like a program, programmatic setting. So it's not so like, just not as formal. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Aleah, is there anything else?
No, I think you explained it pretty well. I'm on board with you. I agree with everything you said.
Thank you, Addie and Aleah. You know, we really appreciate the work that you're doing. It was so important. And it shows such terrific leadership on the part of you.
Both of your parts to build, organize this effort, keep it going. It sounds like you have a strategic plan for what you plan to do in terms of next steps. That's just really terrific. And just so appreciated for your leadership. Student voice in this is incredibly important, right? And to have students leading that conversation is, is very meaningful. So thank you for that.
Thank you all. We appreciate your support. We really do.
Thank you. And hopefully we'll get updates as you all consider what you were planning for next legislative session as well. Sorry, Addie. I look forward to updates as you guys have additional plans for next legislative session. Thank you.
Just to echo that, Addie, I was talking to Aleah earlier about, you know, what she's planning to do next year when she moves out of state. And I realize that you're still in state. And I do hope that you will, you know, feel free to contact the board. We love having the updates. You're always welcome to come. And just, you know, please know that you're, you know, standing invitation to come and let us know about the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. You're all awesome.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so now we're going to go back to, I believe, Agenda Item J, which is an update on SBE, State Board of Ed Activities and Policies. And just to provide a little bit of context for this, prior to 2012, as we all know, the board oversaw the Department of Education with a commissioner. But then Act 98 of 2012 changed that structure, elevated the department to an agency and the commissioner to a secretary. However, that was sort of as far as it went. And we're still, you know, 12 years later, dealing with rules and statutory obligations that seemingly pertain to the board. But I think we can all look at it. And I would imagine even the legislature looks at this and knows that it's really not the board who's being mentored to do these activities at this point. It's more appropriately left to the agency because they have the staffing, they've got the support that nine people sitting on the Board of Ed just don't have. So Kim had offered to sort of go through and come up with a master list of obligations that the board has in statute, I think I'll put it that way. At the same time, obviously, we've all been very, very busy these past several years doing work that is clearly authorized by rule and statute. And so it's a little bit of a question of whether we work from, you know, top down or bottom up to sort of land on what is the work of the State Board of Ed. And at the same time, in the property yield that has passed, there is a new commission that is being set up that will include, you know, the secretary, the State Board of Ed, that will also be considering these issues. So I think everyone is really thinking about this. And I think now is really a good time to, you know, start having this conversation. So, Kim, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And we had a few months in a row talked about it would be great to have a working calendar for the year and where we are sort of pre-populating and holding space for our responsibilities that are ours in statute or our requirements. And we have been working hard and we've been in reaction to areas that we've needed to update rules. And that has, ends up consuming a lot of our time. So in the absence of a work calendar that puts important reporting on a calendar ahead of time, it is easy for those things to move out of the way in the event of that which we're reacting and responding to. So I've never done this exercise before myself. But I was like, okay, we talk all the time about where we are enabled in statute and where we're constrained in statute when we're looking at regulation. And so I literally just sat down. And this is the document called State Board of Ed Statutory Authority was my attempt to put in one place all sections of Title 16, and there's also Title III, I think, regarding, or Chapter III, maybe? Title 16, Chapter III still? No. III VSA is the appointment of secretary at the very end. So these are the areas where I found our both authority and responsibility. And what I tried to do is just capture like bullets of what each of those things were and found some of them especially interesting, but also wanted to put with it the link to it so that you guys can get to it if you're more curious. The date that it was last updated, because to Jennifer's point, the change from commissioner to secretary, there have been some statutory changes since then. So I wanted to put the dates there that didn't sort of capture changes that would be more reflective of practice. And so we have among our list of things, the opportunity and responsibility to inform legislation. So if, if this exercises helps us to say, oh, wait a minute, in practice, we really don't do that. But we're going to expect every fall a report on student outcomes, for instance, from the AOE. We have a strategic then plan for our year that targets that kind of reporting in a way that meets what's currently our obligation, may later be the AOE's obligation. But we are sort of the public platform for that. So we could do it. And we used to do this in our school district in Essex Westford. We would say, okay, student data results would typically be in, you know, in August, maybe, on a good year. And we'd get reporting on it in September, October. So that, that came ahead of our budgeting process that let us think about what was needed in terms of meeting student outcomes with the budgetary allotment. So it was a very thoughtful process of board calendaring for a year where we knew we could target and hold space for important things. So I don't need to go through all of this. One of the things that we're supposed to have is adequate staff, which we know that Jennifer had talked even with the legislature this year to say, we are incredibly grateful for Susanna and Maureen. But while they are so generous with their time with us and their tolerance of us, they are not our staff. We don't direct them and we don't have the resources to do that. But it's in statute. So I thought that was interesting. We are in statute, required to establish and regularly update a long-term strategic vision for the delivery of education services in Vermont. So that is in there. And it is actually one of those things, Jenna, when you and I came on the board, they had just, there was a strategic plan that I found on the website. So I also have in the meeting materials, I think now, if, if Susanna and Maureen, I found it late last night. But there was a strategic plan from 2015 to 2019. And that was adopted in 2015. And then when we first came on the board, they had already just adopted a strategic vision before we got there. And we had started to look at it, to unpack it as a plan. And Jenna and I are the only people remaining from that initial board. And, and that was, so the strategic vision, which shows up on the AOE's website for us, is dated February of 2018. So in theory, we would be in sync with needing to revisit a strategic vision for education, which despite that being, I think, helpful because we are in a place of sort of a public presence to be able to engage in communities, which is among the things that fall under 164 for us. There is now a commission happening. So like, getting out ahead of that wouldn't make sense. But being mindful of whatever should happen in legislation or what we recommend for legislation around whether or not we are the body that should be doing that public engagement to have the broad, not, not deep tactical implementation, but rather the broad engagement with communities across the state to understand, which it sounds like the commission's doing, what is the vision for public education? If that remains in our statutory authority, it'll be after Jenna and I are gone. But it would be something that would be a great thought process project for the State Board of Ed to meet that statutory requirement. Put it in writing. Have it be a strategic plan that can then be filled with the collaboration of the AOE to be the tactical, how do we get this vision that we heard from across the state from the commission into a place that can be monitored, basically? A strategic plan is really only... A strategic plan is really only as good as its monitoring. So that was one of the things I thought really interesting as I looked at it. Um, and so I tried to capture sort of the essence of each of these areas of statute that are enabling us. And I think it will be great if in our summer work, we take a look at that and say, what's, um, really us, a funnel for this information versus what's really ours to do? And even if we're a funnel, sync with the AOE to say, when's the best time to get an annual student outcomes report? Because when will that be most readily available? When do we get that, um, whatever that homepage thing is called, that, what's it called? Snapshot, that I think once when it was initially being launched, we saw it, honestly, in all my years in Essex Westford, it didn't get used very much. So I think that there are options and opportunities for us to plan together for that, to draw attention to student outcomes. So that before, before the state is trying to just figure out, how do we fund it? What are we doing? And what are we doing well? And what are our challenges? And how do we align resources for that? So I think we can be an avenue for that. I think we are sort of mandated in statute to do that. And I think it's too hard when we get pulled to so many different things to hold space for that if we don't look at it up there. And then, so I'd be excited to be involved with helping to look at that, maybe at our retreat or unpack this stuff and see what would be the first draft, what would that look like? And then I was like so curious about where we stood on our rules. I was on a roll, people. So I went through and made a chart so that we could look at all the rules that we hold. This work came up, this roles and responsibility work came up long, I literally almost just after we got on the board, probably, I think you were on the board then, Jennifer. And it was, um, Dan and John Carroll working on it. And then we had a subcommittee working on it. And then it keeps sitting on the wall and, and not really moving. And I'm not even sure it would be considered to be current or updated in, in what the state board would recommend or what the AOE would recommend. So this was just simply, okay, this is what we've got, people. These are the last times these were updated. And, um, this is the statutory authority and sort of the description of each of them. These are really just tools for us to sort of digest at our leisure. Think about how that helps us then prioritize our work and what that thoughtful calendaring might look like so that we could start to codify sort of what's required in calendaring. What are we already doing? What are our policies and practices that we want to put in one place? So we almost have like a manual for the State Board of Ed, as you would on a local school board, that takes a look at, um, the required policies that we think make good sense for good practice and would help the next State Board of Ed or the next new State Board member come in and maybe not be as dear in the headlights. I got like, Jenna and I got this huge stack of stuff for 13, the rules that we're going to go with Act 173, literally our first meeting. And we're like, oh my gosh, what are we supposed to be doing? So that was sort of my hope in starting the conversation with some resources for us to look in one place. Think about it. And then whatever is helpful to you, Jennifer, for next steps, I'm all in. I don't have a lot of months left. And I would love to think we could codify some of what makes best sense. And also help inform next round of legislation with the new crop of legislators to, um, capture what we see in our work to be really important. So, if that makes sense. Any questions from anybody who are, um?
Thank you for all your work.
It was- And you are the right person to do that. Given all of, all of your background on, on the, on the State School Board Association and looking at policies and pieces, thank you. I guess my question is, is what do you see as the next step?
Yeah. If, if you all are finding this, um, to be a good place to start, I think, I don't know how you want it done, but it would make sense, I think, to pull out from it the statutory requirements and then check in with if these are really coming from the AOE. Because COVID or otherwise, we really, there are some of these sort of, the State of Education in Vermont Annual Report hasn't happened that I can think of in a while. We do a report to the legislature. Not that we don't do that because that is different, I think, than the State of Education.
Saying that there are, you know, things that seem to clearly not apply to the board. And so I've used that really more to talk about the work that we're doing and the work that we anticipate.
Absolutely. And I think that that is still an important report. Like, we're required to do that. That's not, not a requirement. It's just that there are some other things that we, I think before COVID, and Jenna can help me remember, I think we did get some reports like from Dan that were like the overall state results of what used to be kneecap or whatever it was. We would get sort of a statewide look at that. I remember it happening probably once and then COVID hit and we just didn't, those tests weren't happening. We didn't do it. And I don't think we've done it since. So though it is not a report that we could produce, it's a report we're responsible for having, you know, done, I guess, which we can't do it. So we would want to check with the AOE and say, when do you get your statewide results back? When can it be reported in a timely fashion that would be, often we were in knee-jerk reaction mode to, oh my gosh, it shows up in the paper. And, and then we didn't have it on an agenda, for instance, in alignment with that. It's always going to be a matter of timing and that is fine. But if we just weren't even anticipating, then I think we probably are missing. So I, I think it might be helpful if I or anybody who wants to help me with it, somebody looks through and says, okay, here's the reports that we should be doing. Because we are doing, like, I didn't put much down under EQS or, or 2200 because we all know what we're doing in that. So-
Committee, would this make sense to-
Is that happening? Is that-
Well, the committee still exists, right? And so I wonder if we need to sort of re-up the work and have this, take this on as part of that work with an eye toward planning for our August meeting where we, you know, some discussion points and some materials and things along those lines.
And I think by then, we will also have a better understanding of the commission and what that is going to look like and what its charge is going to be and what its timeline is going to be. And I think, you know, a lot of this could maybe, maybe inform that work, um, to sort of help expedite that conversation. And then in the meantime, we can also use our August meeting to talk about, I mean, like, let's start with quick wins and say, what are the things that we do and what's the timeline on that? And, you know, what are, um, you know, things that happen on a cyclical level every year? What are policies that we've put in place? Um, and, and really spend the time on our retreat, putting all of that together in sort of a, you know, standard operating procedures manual. And then in the meantime, know that the commission's work is going to be going on. And in the meantime, I think the commission's work is going to flow into the roles and responsibilities. And if we've got an SOP, we can, you know, then add into it.
Fine. As we're doing that, I think, and sometimes this happens, like whether it's, you know, local board governance and policies where you say, we aren't going to be able to be in compliance with this, but we sort of acknowledge it. We say, okay, just so that, and it would help the legislature, I think, to know in statute, it says we're, we're supposed to be doing a strategic vision. And we wouldn't want to do that preemptively ahead of the commission work.
But I think that would be real, I'm sorry.
And we would then decide, is that still the legislature's intent? That the State Board of Ed be responsible for reinvigorating that vision conversation once a year? If it is, great, leave it in statute. If it isn't, you should know that it's in statute and we're supposed to be doing it. And we'll try to do it, you know, in the tail of the commission's work, for instance. So I think as much as anything, even acknowledging where we can or we don't, even saying we haven't had a full Vermont student outcomes report in, since pre-COVID, we recognize that's an important thing annually. And we are coordinating with the AOE to understand the best timing for that so that that can be a regular standing report. Because I think with the, if the value that we can add is that it's a public meeting, it's a public forum, it's not just a report to the legislature, that the folks around the state would have sort of the insight to be looking for. And it lets us sort of center around some successes in education and some conversations happening in education. We did a meeting a while ago around personalized learning in John's early days. And we were down in Rutland and people came in and, and talked. So we, we can have sort of forums that bring people into conversations around either hot topics or more importantly, like strategic thinking topics versus reactionary topics. So, um, so yeah, I think it would be, I think we, the legislature can only prioritize what they can prioritize. But if we are in a place to say, on the roles and responsibilities work, we see all, we understand all these to be in statute. And we don't think all of these are really relevant in the current structure. Here's what we see to be really important and we retain. And for this reason, and here's sort of like similar to like the rules on CTE. We felt like if we're doing EQS, we should do CTE rules. And we made that case. But this would be a more thorough thinking of, um, within all of this, these are some things that we think we should retain. And these are others so, um, more advisory guidance-ish that are so definitely the AOE's rules that don't make sense. The big what things probably stay with the AOE, the big how things should be, or the, stay with the State Board of Ed, because those are bigger engaging conversations. The big how you do it things should not be ours. And a lot of them are really outdated.
I think we can give school plus idling to the agency.
Right. So it was so, it was a little bit laughable and it was a fun exercise. And apparently my, you know, marginal OCD tendencies appreciated being able to look at it in this way. But I was like, okay, some of these are really old. Some of them literally are referencing law that doesn't exist anymore in these rules. So even just mechanically, what are the ways we could get some of those things off the books because they don't belong with anyone? Can't we do a like strike call and, and that is more like, can we figure it out, get that get done? So things are a little bit more cleaned up. I would feel great if that happened before Jenna and I were done. So anything I can do to help that, I'm happy to.
Thank you for doing all this work. And I would just say, from an agency perspective, I think this is the right time to have this conversation. Um, as I'm, you know, new to the agency, I've just started leading a strategic planning and visioning within our agency around identifying the strengths of the agency, the challenges for the agency. Really what is our enduring, um, contribution and role within the education landscape? And I think we want to do that work in alignment with the State Board of Education. Um, I also am very eager to establish a cadence of reporting so that we understand that cycle and can anticipate, um, when, uh, data will be available and also then structured decision-making accordingly. Um, so that we are in that process as an agency. So I think it's really, um, great that the State Board would be doing that in parallel. Um, and maybe, um, maybe we could identify how we can stay in alignment as that committee is meeting and as the agency is moving forward with our planning. Um, maybe we could have an offline conversation around how to do that effectively. Because I think it's going to be really important for us to take this opportunity to create alignment and then also leverage the expertise and resources of both entities to best serve, you know, education in the state.
Would it make sense to, and I'm, I'm struggling a little bit to understand the timing of the commission versus the timing of roles and responsibility. And, you know, the work that you're doing, which is related to roles and responsibilities. And you're not on the committee, but I think you're, you're really kind of coming at it from a different angle. And I just want to make sure that we're all sort of- Tabby, yeah, and Lyle.
Lyle and Oliver.
No, Rich. Well, Rich. Yeah.
We haven't met. We haven't, we haven't met.
No, but he is named on the committee.
I would see this as really important pre-work to the commission, right? Being able to come, um, to the first convening and identify, you know, the core roles and responsibilities. And, and maybe some of the questions that have been raised through these preliminary conversations. I think it could be quite helpful to make, um, that commission, um, really effective and advance the work quickly.
So I'm wondering if what makes sense is, could we have Kim sort of take her first pass at, you know, what seems to make sense to hand off to the agency versus what makes sense to keep? And then have you submit that to the roles and responsibilities committee and then have you guys talk about it sort of as a lead-in to the work of the commission?
I think, I think the commission's work isn't, isn't final yet. Like, so I, I think until we have ink on that deal, we need to do our work here. And I think the work that we need to do here is to get real clear about what we see the state board's roles and responsibilities are.
That's what I'm saying.
Right? And so, you know, maybe, maybe helpful to point Kim to the committees.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Like, she's going to do the first pass.
You said handed off to the committee.
Well, right. I mean, she can't come to a committee meeting because then we'd have a quorum. So I'm saying like, she can do kind of, sort of-
And-
Rich. So it's, it's Tammy, Jenna, Lyle and Rich are the four people. But I think, you know, if we want Kim to continue doing, or, you know, or the committee can sort of take this work and run with it.
Perhaps the committee needs to have a conversation and Kim could come and present to the committee and that'd be part of the quorum.
Yeah.
I think we should set some priorities here because there's just a lot. And I want to be sensitive to Kim's time and what is it that we want to focus on?
And I think I don't want to do it in isolation either. I, I mean, I wonder if we can allot thoughtful time to it at the retreat in August or, um, because the roles and responsibilities, I think, committee, if I'm remembering correctly, you all were coming to some consensus, I guess, around what you were recommending to the legislature, which I'm not sure would remain where it was from back then.
Are recommendations that we would make now.
And that's what I'm remembering. So I think to Tammy's point, we, we want to, I think, take, I think, take what we are required to do in statute and look at that and say practically that doesn't make much sense, but or, and/or legislature, if you want us to every five years be updating the strategic vision, because we're not going to assign a commission every five years, we are acknowledging we could be the body for that and we won't get out ahead of the commission. But the State Board of Eds of the future will have the ability to convene, that's one of our abilities, is to convene that type of work that could have happened, let's say, you know, whenever, a year or two before a commission or the legislature might enable a commission again in five years or, like, who really knows? But I think even pointing them to, because we know legislators are busy and they're overseeing a lot. And what they remember about what our statutory authority and responsibility is, is whatever they had to touch last. And so that, this was really that foundation. I'm not sure that I, I would be happy to sort of lead that part of the conversation in August, if that's helpful, or thinking before then.
It's more of a roles and responsibilities committee thing. I mean, that, that seems to fall more within the charge of that committee. I'm glad you raised the issue.
Yeah.
Like, I, I want that part, like, because I think you've brought up a really, really good point. And I think, you know, also in this list, there's some low-hanging fruit there where I think with probably not a whole lot of discussion, we could agree that, you know, some of these rules don't.
Yeah. That's, I think the rules, we could actually probably do some of them, like, short order that.
Yeah. And then I think there's probably a gray area that is really more the work of the commission and roles and responsibilities.
I think I would recommend, because you guys are going to have to live with it, that you go in with your recommendations for our role as opposed to waiting for the commission to, um, to drive, they don't fully understand.
I think the commission is really, as I understand it, is to set a vision and some strategic priorities for public education in the state. And-
But this feeds into it.
It could, but I, I don't, I don't, I'd have to think more about that. I don't think it, as I understand it, at least as I envision the commission, commission is more focused on the field than it is governance. In order, in order to set priorities for funding and revenue, right? Like, right? These kinds of things don't have a lot of interplay unless we're talking about completely restructuring the relation. I don't know how the relationship between AOE and the state board impact those kinds of issues, which is what, if you look at sort of what the Senate and the House have talked about, I don't think that, I don't know. My suggestion for a next step is that this gets referred to the subcommittee. Kim will have you come in and talk to the subcommittee and let's sort of, as a group, we can come up with some next steps and come back out to the, to the board in June and get some input on what we think next steps will be. That'd be my suggestion.
I'm happy to do it.
I think the only way that works is if one of the people on the subcommittee doesn't come. Or-
She can't present her work to the subcommittee?
Oh, well, that is true.
I was gonna, yeah. She can present her work to the subcommittee. She's just not a voting member of the subcommittee, correct?
I don't know. It's a pretty big committee. So you're going to run into, you're going to run into quorum problems anytime anybody comes. But I don't remember when we re-established that committee because it hasn't been active in a while.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it was active most recently because you and Dan did your joint report.
That was two years ago.
Yeah, it was two years.
It's been a long time.
So, okay. I think we have a plan.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to move ahead because we are off schedule and we're about to lose a quorum.
I'm sorry.
Um, so I'm going to, I think the last, well, kind of the last item, the last substantive item, um, our updates to Rule Series 23- item, are updates to Rule Series 2370, which is our career and technical education rules. So I'm going to go through this quickly. The governor had a, he was really hoping that the General Assembly was going to pass a bill that was going to consider updates to the CTE rules. As my, my understanding is that that bill has not, you know, passed. And so that doesn't mean, however, that we don't have the capacity to update the rules, because they are our rules. And when the bill was still being discussed, Zoe actually had a really, really good idea of having the agency take the first pass at doing updates to the rules and then handing that version off to the State Board, at which point the State Board would oversee the formal APA rulemaking process. So it would allow the agency to kind of, you know, provide the skeleton, and then the board would kind of take over and oversee the work and the public comment hearings. And, you know, the agency would then have the option or the ability to provide public comment to whatever the State Board is doing.
And there may be changes to what the agency provides the board between when it comes to us, and the forum goes high court, right?
Correct.
There can be opportunity for comment, just like what we did on EQS. And we also would have the opportunity to consult with the folks that wrote the APA report and.
Right.
Yeah, the idea when we were trying to identify how to move forward was really looking at three key areas. One is how do we make sure that we are allocating staff resources appropriately? And so the idea with this approach was that I could help front-load some of that resource and expertise at the beginning to draft the, the initial rules. The second was looking at expediency, because if we're able to get a pretty solid draft in place at the beginning, then there's likely less refinement that may be needed in that second phase. And the third was making sure we can maximize public input, which I know that the board has really been able to do very effectively. And so we thought that this kind of shared approach could really maximize the, and leverage the resources of both entities to do this work well. The agency is, is very committed to moving forward with drafting the first set of rules. I will say, right now, I cannot commit to a timeframe. I need to, to do a little bit of a review on that. But we do have broad consensus that the rules do need to be modernized. And there are some key areas where we can do that in terms of clarifying even language that is outdated and some of the roles and responsibilities. We do want to acknowledge, though, that there does need to be a broader conversation around larger reform as it relates to funding and governance. And so that, that we want to be mindful that if, you know, we go through this rulemaking series, there are some things that could be modernized now in the absence of that, but we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we still want to be able to move forward with that, the broader reform that I anticipate will be part of this commission on the vision of public education. Also, we want to align that, and as Tammy mentioned, with the APA, which is our consultant that is providing recommendations, they're continuing to do that work. So we want to coordinate with them to really come back to you around kind of the timeline of when we could have that first draft of rules to move forward. And then we thought it might be helpful to bring in our team to a State Board of Education meeting, an upcoming meeting of your choice, just to share some background on what we have been doing in partnership with the consultant and share some of the initial recommendations.
So.
And I do think that there's also an opportunity out of this process for us to, as a group, to make recommendations back to the legislature around governance and funding that can further reinforce and potentially refine some of the recommendations that are already in the APA report. So to your point, right, like, this can serve as a catalyst for that conversation as well, right?
I think so.
Sort of aligning, modeling, me with 2200 had a pretty quick turnaround on an update that was related to Act One. So should they make progress on CTE legislation next session? I think we certainly identified the value and importance in having CTE respond to Act One as well and not be out of alignment with EQS. And so consequently, I definitely think, and I want to just clarify, I think Tammy asked the question, we would get the initial draft from you all, similar to the way we got from the Act One Working Group, their first draft pass on EQS updates. And then we would have some committee meetings that bring in sort of, our questions had been implementability and alignment. And so that, whomever is on that CTE committee would then check those things and then move it through the State Board and into the formal APA process. Did I get all that right?
I'm not sure what that, the former process was that you referenced and if it's exactly the same, but I think the intent is that, that we would be able to do the first draft, move it to the State Board for you to make some refinements, and then drive the public comment process. Yeah.
And I think the benefit, too, is that the agency will have the benefit of attorney review before it comes to the State Board, and then we can add to it, you know, with our legal counsel, do the lift and shift from Act One and put that into CTE, and then make further updates in response to public comment.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't having to just shepherd it into the formal process without the committees doing whatever they needed to do.
I'm very appreciative of your reflection, which led to working together, coming together. I find also this, like, speaking about rules and responsibilities, I find it's a perfect opportunity for us to really share some understanding. It's not you against me, or he or they against us. I'm saying this just because if we are all here talking about education and really thinking about the kiddos out there, the staff, teachers, administrators out there, I think that collaboration is, we need to enhance it. It's not AOE against the State Board or the commission against the State Board. It's hard to come to a shared vision about things, but I think that work is needed. Just want to reiterate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more discussion? Then I hereby move that the State Board of Education establish a Career and Technical Education CTE Update Committee that will consider changes to Rule Series 2370, Career Technical Education, and manage the rulemaking process through to completion. Any discussion?
Okay. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aleah, are you still with us?
Aye, yep.
Thank you.
I believe that's everybody.
And I'd like to make a second motion. I further move that the State Board of Education authorize its chair to appoint members to the CT Update Committee.
Okay. Seconded by Mohammed. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting or approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. We have approved the motion, and we have a plan. So that brings us to, I'm just making sure that we've gotten.
I apologize, but I need to leave, everyone.
Future meeting planning, actually, Aleah, since you're still with us. Bye.
Sorry, everyone.
Secretary Saunders, we were talking about how your last meeting is going to be in June, and I'm wondering if at your last meeting, if you would be willing to share reflections on your time on the State Board of Education? Just, it can, it can be whatever you want, but I think, you know, Zoe's thought was that it would be helpful for us to hear, you know, what your impressions were, and I think it would also be helpful for future students to kind of understand, you know, what the role of the student board member is. So I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I'd love to, to share my reflection.
Good. Excellent.
Look forward to it.
Thank you. I think the timing is right. We may hear back from Otter Valley Unified Union with regard to the composition of their board. We could have given them a deadline if they wanted to get back to us, so that might be on the agenda. Anything else that board members can think of?
I was remembering, Jennifer, that we had tabled the ethnic and social equity standards for completion of EQS, and we had anticipated that the EQS committee would move that work after. So feeling a moment of breath evidenced by my four, by my several pages of organization, I'm wondering if we should take, if the EQS committee should revisit the recommendations that were made to us and, and decide what our path forward is on that as a committee.
Yes. So that, I mean, I think that's going to be EQS committee, not State Board, June agenda. The other thing I will say is, we are over budget with our legal services contract. So we might have to be a little sensitive about the timing, because the fiscal year will start again in July.
July 1, yeah. But we could probably even do organizational. We haven't looked at it in so long, so we might be able to even pull together a meeting before July 1.
And then potentially report back.
That might not necessarily need, it might help us to identify what we need as a group to try and move that through. That process doesn't go through APA, the formal rulemaking process. But it, we haven't, any of us been around when we had previously approved state standards. So we don't really know what that looks like. And so I think that would be a beneficial organizational conversation for the committee and, and us to know what we expect of that process, before we have to spend any legal money.
Anything else for June? Okay. Well, to be continued. All right. If there, if that is it for the future meeting planning, I will now see if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard. Yes.
We did all day.
So one of the things that Aleah was, was part of the, our teacher appreciation, we gave our teachers and all our staff certificates to Tim and Doug's, which is a Northeast Kingdom institution. And so it's at the Pick 'n Shovel through Newport, and they have the best creamies. So you've done such hard work today. Appreciate all of you.
Are they open now?
And Aleah, you can come get one tomorrow. But I highly recommend that you stop by after a long day. Pro tip, I can't eat anything bigger than a baby creamy.
That's usually expensive.
But whatever you're feeling, you know, please enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Dead end.
The sundaes, the shakes are really delicious as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So exciting. Thank you for lunch.
Yes.
Yay! I want two!
Well deserved. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard? I don't see anyone online raising a hand. Don't see anyone in the audience. So if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Kim. Seconded by, seconded by Jenna. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All right. We stand in adjournment. Thank you all very, very much. This was a wonderful meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.